This is slide two.
This is slide two.
And back to one.
And back to one, slide two. And back to one, slide two. And back to one.
Okay, so Stephen Doza is muted, I will unmute him. Can the caller with the last four digits 5949 please identify themselves?
Hi.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Hi, Ben.
Thank you. Thank you, we can hear you. We can hear you, thank you. Thank you, Sarah and Chairman, we're waiting on Commissioner Contreras-Leo at the moment.
That's it?
That's correct.
Okay, Contreras-Leo, I just got off the phone with her, she is in a car, in her car. So, um, she said she was going to be calling in shortly. Do we have, do we have everybody else in the meeting?
We do, Chairman.
So we have a full commission at this point in time, less Cynthia Contreras-Leo.
That's correct.
Okay.
So Chair, we can begin if you'd like, um, you just let us know, if Ali, if you are ready on your end, um, please let us know.
Uh, yes, everything's set up in the room.
That'd be great.
Okay, um, well, if that's, if that's it, then let's, uh, um, Madam Secretary, will you please start the meeting, start recording the meeting?
Yes, meeting will now begin to be recorded.
Okay, I would like to call this Special Planning Commission meeting of August 3rd, 2020 to order. Uh, Ali, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
All right, ready, place your right hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
-of the United States-
Of the United States of America.
-which is a republic, for which it stands-
Public, for which it stands-
A nation, under God-
Under God.
Indivisible-
Indivisible-
With liberty and justice-
With liberty and justice for all.
Sarah, Sarah?
Yes.
Um, one thing, I just got a message from Cynthia Contreras-Leo, would you be able to send her, can you send her right now the, uh, call-in for the Zoom?
Yes, I can go-
She doesn't have that information.
I can go ahead and re-send that out, um, I, we, I will do that now.
Just send it to her, she's just on, she's on her cellphone, so just send it to her cellphone.
Tommy, when you're ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, Madam Secretary, will you please call roll?
Yes. Commissioner Garcia? Here. Commissioner Morrissey?
Here.
Commissioner Lynn?
Here.
Commissioner Fan?
Here.
I, Chair Contreras-Leo, and Chair McLaughlin?
Here.
Chair, you have form.
Did you, did, did Rivera, did, Phyllis?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Rivera?
Here.
Chair, you have form.
Okay, thank you. All right, I would like to invite the, uh, Commission Secretary to describe the way the public can access this virtual meeting.
Thank you, Chair. This meeting is being livestreamed via YouTube at www.youtube.com/cityofsantaannavideo/live and to our website at www.santa-annaboard/CC/city-meeting. While the meeting is in progress, the public may provide a comment by phone. To comment by phone, please dial 1-669-900-9128. Enter meeting ID, 315965149, followed by pound. When prompted by participant ID, just enter pound. When the item like, when the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, please dial *9. When the comments period is open, I will call on you by the last three numbers listed on the caller ID. When you are called on, please state your name, your position on the matter, your comment. You will have three minutes, I will alert you when your time is up. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Moving on to public comment on non-agenda items. Does anyone wish to speak on a non-agenda item at this time?
Chairman, we have, um, two individuals who have raised their hands to speak. Uh, we'll start with the first one.
Okay.
Um, caller with the last four digits 8477.
Good evening, uh, good evening, this is Dale Helbig, Ward 3. Uh, I have a comment on the general plan update, uh, that is currently in progress. Uh, on Friday and Saturday, Planning Commis-, or the Planning Department presented, uh, their, uh, vision for the future of Santa Ana. And a couple of things that really concerned me were the fact that, uh, a lot of the changes that were being proposed for the land use element dealt with urban, uh, an upgrade to urban neighborhood. Uh, none of it addressed the open space that is needed by the city. And if we're projecting 20,000 people being added to the city, uh, population, we need 40 acres of land of open space. Uh, that is not even being looked at. And, and I question the vision that the city has if we're not doing anything to address open space in the general plan update. A lot of other residents called in on Friday and Saturday morning. Uh, most of them were concerned equally as I was on various issues. Uh, Madison Park is really concerned about what's going on. Uh, a lot of people were unaware that this was even happening. And, uh, I know the city's been working on it for quite some time, but, uh, to only have roughly 100 people respond to this, uh, virtual meeting shows that we need to do a lot more in getting the word out before we start implementing changes to this. We're not going to be the Golden City and beyond if no one's going to be able to provide input. I know the draft, uh, program EIR came out for review starting today. But I, we can comment on that, but it's just going to be on environmental impact issues. And a lot of the comments people had may or may not address environmental issues, but definitely have concerns of the population of the city. So I'm hoping that we can, uh, allow the city and the residents ample time to review this and not just go through the motions once again of the 45-day review and then start approval. You guys will be seeing this on, uh, August 24th for a study session. And so I, I urge you to look at the draft environmental report now and be prepared for the 24th. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Next person?
Uh, caller with the last four digits 2361.
Uh, this is, uh, John Hanna, but I wanted to comment on the agenda item, not, uh, just general comment.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll wait till we get to that point, Jenna.
Good enough, thank you, John. Um, Ali, anybody else?
Uh, no other callers have raised their hands.
Okay, hearing the, hearing none, uh, at this point in time, we will close the, uh, public comments and move on to the consent calendar. Uh, with respect to the consent calendar, since we are not, uh, we are not, uh, moving on any of the minutes from the last meeting, nor are there any commissioners that are absent at this point in time, um, we will close the consent calendar and move on to our business calendar. Moving on to the business calendar and public hearings, uh, with respect to public hearing protocol, I would like to now review the process for public hearing so that everyone knows what to expect. Staff will provide a presentation and answer the questions from the commission. Public hearing will then be open. The applicant will be given, uh, opportunity to speak, limited to 15 minutes. Members of the public will have the opportunity to comment, uh, limited to three minutes. The applicant will have, uh, the ability to, uh, respond to the comments made by the public, with a limit to, to five minutes. Public hearing will be closed, the discussion will return to the commission, or formal action taken to approve, conditionally approve, uh, deny, or continue review of the application. Um, just for the sake of everybody that's coming up to speak tonight, please, uh, consider the following suggestions when organizing your comments. Please state your name and address, state whether or not you support or oppose, uh, or are neutral to the proposal. Uh, your statement should be, should include all pertinent facts without your knowledge, within your knowledge. Avoid gossip, emotion, or repetition. A clear, concise, non-repetitive argument is, is most effective. This is, this is the time and place to consider item number one, zoning ordinance amendment number 2020-dash-03. Um, recommendation on this matter will be forwarded to the city council at a later date for final determination. Before we begin, do any of the, do any of our commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regards to this item? I'll go down the list and just, uh, ask each one in, individually. First, we'll say, no, uh, Commissioner Garcia?
Uh, yes, I do. I, um, was contacted by Steve of the BIA, Pamela and Tim of Legacy Partners, and, uh, setside of the other, we asked the Kennedy Commission to discuss today's item, and I did speak to them.
Okay, Commissioner Morrissey? Yeah, no disclosures for me. Commissioner Lynn?
Um, I received a letter, uh, from Mr. Jarkurn for the opposition of the item.
Okay, Commissioner Fan? Okay, thank you, Commissioner Fan?
Hi, yes, I received, uh, comments and, uh, received phone calls from a number of, uh, individuals and organizations regarding amending this, uh, ordinance.
Okay, Commissioner Rivera?
Yes, I was contacted by, uh, John Hanna and also Pam Supetto and Tim O'Brien, Legacy Partners.
Okay. Uh, Cynthia, Vice Chair Cynthia Contreras-Leo, are you with us?
I am.
Okay.
I was contacted by-
Have you got anything to disclose?
I do, I was contacted by Pam Supetto, the head of the, uh, Don Hanna, Ernesto Medrano.
Okay, thank you. With regards to myself, I was contacted by a number of different, uh, individuals and organizations with respect to this, uh, this, uh, particular ordinance. So as we move forward at this point in time, uh, staff, Ali, who is going to be presenting, uh, at this point in time?
Uh, Chair McLaughlin, this is Mintai, I will be attending the item tonight. Um, if the commission, if the audience prepare, we can move forward with, um, the review of the project. Uh, on slide number one there, this is a proposed modification to the existing housing opportunity ordinance, zoning code amendment number 2020-dash-03. Uh, this review of the existing housing opportunity ordinance is to provide an update, uh, to the ordinance, providing a catalyst for, uh, new construction and future investment into the city relating to housing development and creation of both, uh, affordable-
Yes, I was contacted by John Hannah and also Pam Supetto and Tim O'Brien, Legacy Partners.
Okay. Cynthia, Vice Chair Cynthia Contreras Lee, are you with us?
I am.
Okay.
I was contacted by-
Have you got anything to disclose?
I do. I was contacted by Pam Supetto, Seth Sacco, and John Hannah, and Ernesto Medrano.
Okay, thank you. With regards to myself, I was contacted by a number of different individuals and organizations with respect to this particular ordinance. So as we move forward at this point in time, staff, Ali, who is going to be presenting at this point in time?
Chair McLachlan, this is Min Thai, I will be presenting the item tonight.
Okay.
If the commission, audience prepare, we can move forward with the review of the project. On slide number one there, this is a proposed modification to the existing housing opportunity ordinance, zoning code amendment number 2020-03. This review of the existing housing opportunity ordinance is to provide an update to the ordinance citing a catalyst for new construction and future investment into the city relating to housing development and creation of both affordable and market grade housing. It focused on the creation also of enhancing for sale units in the city as homeownership ratio between ownership and rental is relatively low. So one of the goal of this ordinance to enhance affordable for sale unit opportunity to create new units from the existing inventory. And this is in response to concerns about creation of new rental units in the city, increasing density. The committee recommended that we look into the existing inventory and how do we preserve, how do we create, and how do we provide affordable housing for residents who are already here and in need of affordable housing. And then also finally, we should enhance the quality of the housing stock, both affordable and market grade. Next slide, please. The existing ordinance required review at the end of 2018. This requirement was put in place by the city council in 2015 when it amended the housing opportunity ordinance. One of the goal was to evaluate if the changes in 2015 made any impact to development of affordable housing. The staff provided the city council with an update at the end of 2018 and initiated comprehensive review of the ordinance. Based on that review, the city council formed an ad hoc committee in mid-2019 and directed the committee to work with staff to bring back final recommendation for city council approval. The makeup of the committee changed in recent months, and the new committee that was formed with the departure of a council member was able to finish the formal recommendation as provided the form of the ordinance to staff and presenting to the commission for your consideration tonight. Next slide, please. Major changes, I'll go over the summary of the major changes as I'm sure you have quite a few questions tonight. So I will go over the major changes and then provide more time for the commission to be able to ask questions of staff as well as hear the audience. Update to the definition sections, that it update definition for affordable income levels as well as elements that are being addressed in the ordinance entitled projects and the general plan. The ordinance also changed the applicability of projects going from now where it is currently applicable to projects of five or more units to projects of only 20 units or more and requesting an increase in general plan density. So that application of the WHO is only applied to projects that is requesting an increase in general plan density, whereas of now, it is both general plan density as well as zoning ordinance density increase. It's addressing adaptive reuse projects as an applicability. In 2015, the city council updated the adaptive reuse ordinance to exclude any adaptive reuse project from the WHO. However, that change only took place in the adaptive ordinance and did not made its way into the WHO. For clarity, really purpose, we added this adaptive reuse so that it provides implementation clarity for staff. The ordinance, most significant change is modification of the options for providing affordable units based on the WHO. Currently, the options include building the units on-site, building the units off-site, rehabilitate existing units in other areas of the city, and finally, in lieu fee. So on the first three options, those options remain the same. They're not being modified by this ordinance. This ordinance is aimed to modify the in lieu fee option. It's looking to reduce the in lieu fee for projects to $5 per square foot moving forward. This application of the fee will be, as proposed would be for projects that have yet to submit an application to the city. And again, this proposed change is reaffirming the ad hoc committee's goal of stimulating private investment, new investment into the city for future projects. And therefore, the changes have been made to recommend the city council that the fee be reduced $5 per square foot for projects of 20 and more units. In addition to that, there's another category of projects that have already been entitled. These are projects that have been approved by the city council, have been considered by the planning commission, and are now ready for admission of plans for development and obtaining building permits. These projects have already committed or were approved when the ordinance requires $15 a square foot. So for this category of uses, as we call in the ordinance prior uses, the ad hoc committee understand that while these projects have already committed to a certain fee structure, there's an opportunity here to advance construction interest for those projects that are, because of the current economic environment, unable to move forward or is on the fence about moving forward, to give incentive to be a catalyst for getting shovel in the ground and moving dirt so that we can have construction activity. So for this project, the ad hoc committee recommended that the fee be reduced from $15 to $10, and that $10 would be valid from the effective date of the ordinance to a period of six months, which in my estimate would be about April 1st, based on the current draft of the ordinance. The thinking is that by allowing that time period, projects that are on the fence can get going with final reviews, plan check process, and then obtain permit to secure their $10 per square foot. After the date of April 1st, the ordinance would revert those projects back to a fee of $15. So that is the incentive provision that the ad hoc committee felt was necessary to help stimulate projects that have already been approved to get going with construction. Next slide, please. Additional changes were made to the ordinance that, as I mentioned, would focus on assisting with creation of affordable for sale residential projects. And by allowing for relief on the income requirements, we have heard back from the development community that will help to incentivize the creation of new affordable for sale units in addition to rental units. As we know, currently, the city has a ratio of almost 60-plus percent rental and less than 50% are homeownership. In order to reverse this trend, we have to help create new affordable for sale opportunities so that our residents has the ability to get into a starter home, to be able to move up into a better house, building their foundation for wealth and mobility. So therefore, this provision, these provisions will help to create proposed on-site income units. We also are requiring community benefits from projects when they receive density bonuses. Historically, projects have received density bonus, even double density bonus, from the city without really having give back anything. And some of the give back could include public improvements, open space, other aspects that will merit the city's award of a density bonus. And therefore, the ordinance has been changed to require merit-based award of density bonus and not just providing density bonus without requiring these elements. So one thing I did want to mention as part of this public hearing process, we did provide notice to all interested party, also worked with the community, both development community, housing interested stakeholders, as well as residents in all interested party that want to discuss the WHO with us. And that feedback was provided to the ad hoc committee as well. As part of this hearing process, we received about 40 comments, as of 5:00 p.m. today. And out of those 40 comments that we received, 37 were in opposition and three were for the approval of advancing the WHO to, as recommended to the city council. I just want to take a quick moment to address one of the repeating discussion in the comments that I want to make sure that we address immediately is that there were concern of the ordinance in its recognition of code enforcement, health and safety issues, and looking at a better housing stock, is that that language for, there was a concern that safety may be looking at diverting funding from the housing ordinance to public safety, meaning police. And I want to make sure that that is not the function of the food department. This ordinance is implemented and administered by the planning and building agency as well as the community planning agencies. Funding for the project has been, are currently being used, and will always be under this ordinance for creation, maintenance, and enhancement of housing and affordable housing. Enhancing the health and safety for our residents by removing blight, by ensuring that we have a quality housing stock that is free of, that is free of, you know, maintenance issues that have heating so that there is a healthy housing environment, decent housing environment for our residents. So with that, that concludes my presentation of the staff report and the recommendation is that the city planning commission forward the ad hoc committee's drafted ordinance to city council or their consideration and approval.
Okay. Thank you, Min. At this point in time, do any of the commissioners have any questions of staff? We will start with Commissioner Garcia.
Yes, I have one question. Min, do you have the dollar figure what was projected of, that should be expected from entitled projects already for the WHO?
So, based on our review of the current entitled projects, it is estimated that the total estimated fee based on the current amount would be approximately $22 million, $22.3 million.
$22.3 million. And in that would work to be, and that's at the $15, assuming that-
Correct.
Those get, take advantage of the reduction in the next six months, you would see a one-third reduction in that, in that projection?
Based on the current draft, that would be correct.
I, that is all for me right now. Mark, I will definitely have more questions in a bit.
That's fine, Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morrissey.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions. One, how was the amount and reduction determined? Was there a metric or, I'm just curious how we arrived at $5 opposed to something else?
In terms of the $5 amount, sorry, we're getting a lot of feedback here. Can someone with a background noise please talk to me? During the process where we met with the ad hoc committee, there were quite a few figures and numbers that came up and were discussed. Based on the historic application of the fee and the various iteration of the WHO ordinance, the fee ranged anywhere between from $5 to $9.35 to $15 where it is now. So in the discussion, based on the goal of looking at promoting new investment, looking at helping the current existing development community, the ad hoc committee directed staff to look at a fee of $5 for projects moving forward to hopefully create new interest in development for development entities that have not yet come to the city. And that would help to create a better level playing field in the development community for Santa Ana. That was the intent of the ad hoc committee. And then the $10 reduction from 15 was to help be a catalyst for construction, for project that has already committed to paying $15.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I have a question, if I may. Continue, continue. Okay. I noticed under the Increasingly Housing Fund statement that there's a revision in the code that requires money, that says money may also be used to pay one-time programs for code enforcement, quality life, and general health and safety activities. What kind of programs are these, if we're trying to put aside money for affordable housing, that these money should be spent directly towards affordable housing? So I'm not, I'm not sure what these other programs involve. Are they, are they for affordable housing or something else?
The answer is yes. They are all for affordable housing purposes. I want, before I go in too deep into that explaining of response, also want to share that we have Executive Director Stephen Mendoza, also as acting interim acting assistant city manager, on the line with us, who runs the CDA and can answer questions related directly to housing spending policy. But the intent of the committee in providing that clarification is to reaffirm a couple of key principles. One is to ensure that with adequate code enforcement, that affordable housing doesn't have, also needs to be quality housing. As we can see in many instances, there are times when we have housing and through code enforcement, we're able to make improvements to the living condition, meeting the minimum housing standards for heating or ventilation for just maintenance issues. So that aspect is an aspect that helps to maintain quality housing stock or for safe living housing stock and helping promote affordable housing. The element, the second element that you asked, the second element that you asked was related to how the spending will be determined. And I want to share that ultimately, the city council will be the one that will approve affordable housing policies and the spending of housing. But one-time programs provide the flexibility for the city to use funding that are derived from this housing opportunity ordinance to be spent in the way that the city sees the benefit furthering of affordable housing. But one example I can give is that if we were to look at a first-time home buyer program, now, this is not new, this is something we have currently, but our current restrictions, because we use federal, because we use state funds, have a layer and multitude of requirements that some of our residents may not qualify. And the goal of this inclusion of such language is that it allows the city- And the goal of this inclusion of such language is that it allows the city the flexibility to have a program that may address the current issues or community faces using funding that is the most flexible and it doesn't create a commitment to have an ongoing program. Whereas many of these affordable housing programs, once you start, it's an ongoing program and you have to maintain an ongoing. And that's not necessarily creating the most flexibility for staff and for the city to adjust changes in, in the, in the marketplace. So those are the two things. I hope that answers your questions.
Yeah, well, yes, it makes sense. I have one other question.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, Article five of that same section references skilled workforce. And it's clear to me on, on that article, it says the developer is encouraged to provide enforceable commitment for a skilled and trained workforce. So I'm, I'm not sure what we're asking them to do there. Is there a, are they required to or I'm really unclear with that language?
It is not a requirement. It is a encouragement of a housing developer to use skilled labor for development of their project. The city ad hoc committee felt that labor issues and the creation of jobs, especially jobs for residents in the city, is a goal that the council ad hoc committee wants to recommend to the council. However, it stopped shy of taking it as a requirement simply to recognize that labor is an important issue, just as development and having the ability to promote housing and new development in the city is also a goal as well. But this is really a recognition of the advances and, and what is needed in, in the labor and workforce environment to promote quality jobs, quality paying high-end jobs, and then also the recognition that we want to employ residents of Santa Ana.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions at this time.
Thank you, Tom. Ken Nguyen, Commissioner Nguyen, do you have any questions of staff?
Yes, I have several questions. My first question is, the, in two thousand and eleven, the city adopted the housing opportunity ordinance that require any development project have five or more housing units that require to pay fifteen percent, that we provide at least fifty percent of the total number of units for affordable housing, for paid in lieu fee. The new proposed amendment indicated that the, the, you know, the affordable housing requirement apply for projects with twenty or more units inside. So what happened between five and, and fif- and twenty units? Is that, does that affect yet or the, I'm looking at you. So could you explain, Min, could you explain that difference?
That's Commissioner Nguyen. So you are correct. The former, or the current ordinance applies to residential development projects of five units or more. And the application of that, sorry, I'm getting a lot of feedback and sounds like paper rustling noise. Okay, so in the application of that, the ordinance states that any project that is applicable between five nineteen units, I'm sorry, between five and twenty units, it's five dollars per square foot. And for projects of over twenty, twenty units, it's fifteen dollars per square foot. The revision as opposed will only applies to projects of twenty units or more.
I think.
All projects that are less than twenty units will not have this requirement.
Okay, great. Now, my next question is, so instead of provide a fifty percent of total number of units as for affordable housing, the developer could pay in lieu fee. I want to know where the in lieu fee went, where the, where the fund would go to, to general fund, general budget or only dedicated only for the affordable housing entity?
The city has an housing opportunity fund created specifically to track and manage housing impact fees that are created through this program. It is not a part of the general fund. It's not.
So what you're saying, hundred percent of the, this in what it called housing opportunity ordinance or in lieu fee will go dedicate only for affordable housing for our benefit of our residents only, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Because it's interesting, you know, in my opinion, you know, the, the affordable housing fund should go dedicate only to the affordable housing, should not be used for anything else. For example, recently in City Gangro, they created a new program called Cal Home and Wish Program to help the first-time homebuyer and if they loan up to sixty thousand dollars with very low interest for the resident of the, of Gangro who wish to buy, you know, the houses in City Gangro, but they can't afford it, well, lack of down payment. Or they, they, they use their own affordable housing fund to help, you know, the low-income residents get able to meet with their rights and parts of the venture in the city. I'm, I, I hope the city would use our affordable fund for those that dedicate for solely benefits of residents for affordable housing need. That'd be all.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. I'm glad you offered me.
All right. Commissioner Rivera.
Yes, a simpler question as far as, as far as what the, what the funds are being used for. I understand that it's only for affordable housing, but I have a couple of questions when it comes to, to the kinds of programs that it'll be used, including, including code enforcement and, and I think it was the quality of life and things along those lines. So I'll, I'll have questions regarding that. But to, also, I guess to reiterate, the reason why the five dollars, you correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason for five dollars for, is to create new interest while the ten dollars is, is for those that are already entitled who committed to fifteen, is that correct?
Correct. You are correct.
Okay. So that, that was, that was the decision as far as the ad hoc committee getting to those numbers was, was that we're trying to create new interest rather than, rather than, you know, getting, getting the other ones completed, correct?
It's both. I think the ad hoc committee recognized that the dollar that has been committed has a certain level of expectation by the committee and by the community that, you know, that that commitment is upheld. So therefore, the, the committee felt that while that commitment has been made, it's certainly beneficial to help kickstart, especially with this current war event going on with the pandemic, that using that five-dollar reduction would provide an incentive to initiate and be a catalyst for construction without reducing too much the commitment that has already been made during the entitlement process.
Okay. And about how many do we currently have that are already entitled?
I, in terms of dollar amount, it's about twenty-two million dollars. In terms of the total number of units, I don't have an exact amount, but I believe it's about sixty-five hundred units that's been entitled.
Okay, sixty-five hundred units. And that's, it's split up between how many, how many projects?
I'm sorry, let me revise that. It's about forty-four hundred units and it's, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight projects that has been entitled, that hasn't paid.
Okay, eight projects. And how, and how long, oh, I guess, these are, these are entitled as far back as, do we have a date as far as like a?
They are definitely entitled after two thousand and fifteen.
Since two thousand and fifteen, oh, okay, well, all right. Yeah, that's, those are my only questions for right now.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Rivera. Commissioner Fan.
Thank you, Chair. Lots of questions on my end. The first one is just for clarification. Throughout the draft, who, I see that we changed the language from mentioning applicable zoning to the general plan. Is that just for clarity and consistency or is there actually a change there?
It's actually a change. As I explained earlier, the current ordinance applies to projects that ask for a general plan enhancement identity, but it also requires that project that asks for zone changes to be applicable under the WHO. The current ordinance only applies to projects that request changes in the general plan.
Okay, and, right, the draft, and I imagine this is somewhat running in parallel with the updated general plan, right?
Yes.
Okay, because there's going to be some land use changes in, in the general plan state.
That's correct.
Okay. And I imagine a lot of these land use changes are more increased density in a number of areas, correct?
The focus changes in the focus area definitely will increase density in those areas.
Okay, thanks. So on page one dash ten, under units for sale, that's section C, here we, so we changed it from, you know, products for sale from minimum of fifteen to six percent of the total unit and, and expanding it to moderate income household. So that means that individuals with higher income, though not necessarily high-income individuals, would qualify for these for sale units.
That's correct.
Okay.
The, the idea and concept behind that is that affordable housing at certain level can be rental, but in order to ensure that we also enhance housing ownership, we have to consider looking at changing our regulations so that there are families that can afford are able to get into an opportunity for a house. These are not changing the affordability levels as established, it's simply allowing to broaden the definition to include moderate housing, which is still a moderate income, which is still an affordable housing and it's not considered market rate.
Right, because it's still based on area median income overall.
Correct, correct.
Okay. And I know that we obviously changed the threshold from five to twenty and we're, we have kind of a special carve-out for developments that are between five and twenty units. Can you just explain to me if you know the thought process behind how we settled on twenty units or how did we decide that?
In terms of the number of twenty units, I don't have the exact history when the ordinance was formed, but these were based on the previous ordinance in terms of the threshold. But the idea is that if you have a certain number of units, you're able to afford to do certain things. But with the allowance of the affordable in lieu fee, that, you know, the payment of in lieu fee would then help to create new affordable housing on opposed development of market rate. So, you know, for nineteen unit or less, there is definitely a smaller fee because those projects, they can only spread the unit cost or the cost of developing affordable housing or the in lieu fee over so many units. And the fee then changed after the threshold of twenty, or more than twenty units, to fifteen dollars for other projects.
Okay, and that's helpful to know. I just kind of wanted to get an idea of, you know, where these numbers are coming from. So now I'm going to ask you some questions about throughout the draft ordinance as well as the staff report, we talked a lot about fifteen, an emphasis on detecting or converting market rate housing, existing housing to affordable rather than building new affordable. I have that straight, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess my question then is, obviously I know that there will be restricted low-income units that will be eligible for conversion back to market rate. Can you let me know currently, what are we expecting, how many units do we have that will be eligible for conversion back to market rate?
So are you saying that the at-risk units currently, how many units could be at risk of coming back as market rate units?
Yes.
The staff did some review earlier today, let me find the numbers. We currently have one hundred and seventy income restricted units, which is eligible for conversion of market rate. So today, as we have a new unit.
Okay, so those one hundred and seventy units are basically what we would be losing. Oh, sorry, there's some feedback here.
I'm sorry to interrupt Commissioner during the discussion. Apparently there's a glitch with Granicus and we were advised by the city clerk's office to encourage anyone listening from home to tune in on YouTube Live and not through the city meeting webpage. So just wanted to make that announcement to rely on YouTube Live if anyone is listening and having difficulties with Granicus on the city's webpage.
Thank you, Ali.
So I just want to get a better picture of what we have in affordable today in the city. And we are aware, because, you know, obviously the draft, too, is focused on retaining and converting current units rather than building new units. We have one hundred and seventy income restricted units that are on the cusp of being converted to market rate.
Correct.
Okay. And in the next ten years, what do we think that number will be? Do you have an estimate?
We estimate that, we estimate that to be approximately fourteen, fourteen to fifteen-hundred units.
Okay. So that means that the, about fourteen hundred units in the next ten years that are currently housing Santa Ana residents are potentially going to be converted to market rate, so it'll directly affect current Santa Ana residents.
Correct, so, correct.
Okay. And with new affordable housing units, we cannot restrict it specifically to Santa Ana residents, correct?
Not if other funding sources or as you would consider call it the flow of money is used. For example, if we use state or federal funds, we can certainly create a local program that provide incentives for attracting, you know, locals, not restricted to just Santa Ana residents. The WHO fee is, in comparison, is a local fee. It is a locally collected and it can be solely be focused to Santa Ana residents.
Okay, so that means if just the city is paying, we can limit it to just Santa Ana residents. But if we're using funds from the state, the fed, other organizations to develop something, less likely that we can restrict it solely to Santa Ana residents.
That is correct.
Okay, yeah. Because I do see, oh, thank you, Lisa, because I do see that we have a Santa Ana resident preference on page one dash nineteen, but of course, as we see in some other low-income affordable housing. on page, um, one dash nineteen, but of course, uh, as we see in some other low income affordable housing developments that recently came up, you know, for, I think it was like eighty units, we had thousands of people sign up, and there's no guarantee that that will actually benefit the residents in our city. Uh, so I just wanted to get that clarification. Um, my other question is regarding the fifteen dollars to the five dollars. Um, a lot of folks have sent comment letters and said, you know, this is a big change. Um, what, did we do any surveys or looked into how these numbers, um, were good? What, what was the thought process behind the numbers that we chose?
Um, the first that have been provided are the numbers that are posed by the ad hoc committee. And as I mentioned earlier, uh, to the same question from, uh, Commissioner Morrissey, the, the, um, five and ten dollar reductions, the goal, uh, of the five dollar is to create an incentive for future investment into development in the city as the ad hoc committee looks forward into the future. Under the current economic conditions, it sees that, you know, the real estate market, uh, will be impacted for many years to come and that, you know, this incentive will help to bring and attract new development. The five dollar, I'm sorry, the ten dollars amount was determined to be appropriate, as I mentioned, is that while, you know, there is a reduction, there's, there needs to be a recognition that these projects have made a commitment to community, um, when it was approved. So therefore, um, you know, while these commitments have been made, there still is a benefit to materialize, help these projects move forward into construction mode where they are maybe in a holding pattern with on the current economic and pandemic situation.
Right, and I, I completely understand that, you know, I think businesses everywhere are definitely struggling. Of course, workers are struggling, and that means our residents are struggling. But I was, I guess I was wondering if we did any surveys of what other cities have or what, you know, what they're trying to do, if they also have inclusionary.
So, out of the thirty-four, um, cities in Orange County, uh, only six cities have fees, um, requiring for inclusionary and inclusionary housing programs. And, um, those six cities, um, a few have, um, case by case related, uh, determination as to what fee is paid. Um, but for those that do have established fee, they range anywhere between, uh, ten thousand dollars, um, and sixteen thousand dollars, but in one case it even goes up to over fifty thousand dollars. But for the most part, it's between ten and sixteen thousand dollars per unit, which is very consistent with ours, the fifteen dollars per unit. And when you take that, uh, fifteen dollars per square foot and multiply it by the average housing unit size of about a thousand square feet, that is, um, in parity of fifteen thousand square, uh, fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, um, thank you. And then my other question is regarding, um, subsection five on page one dash nineteen, and it's, uh, Commissioner Morrissey brought up, you know, the language here, um, states, you know, that the developer is encouraged and should provide an enforceable commitment. Um, I think we have quite a few attorneys, either in the room or listening or on the commission, and we know that that is very different from shall. Uh, in fact, the language, uh, in subsection four specifically states that the developers shall implement a local preference. So, um, I guess I would like to see, I don't know if this is really a question, but to, to make that a shall, so that, you know, just as we're trying to stimulate the economy, this has shown that focusing on ensuring we have a strong workforce, um, that is earning a good wage, will also, um, benefit the economy and the locals. And I'd also like to see that we have preferences for Santa Ana workers, uh, if we can add that in there. Preferences for veterans, uh, who are definitely struggling right now, as well as other local organizations, you know, Garden Grove Unified School District grads, S A U S D, Rancho Santiago grads, um, you know, probably in that order. And if we can add that, that would be great.
Um, it's certainly something that the commission, uh, this is an ordinance that requires city council approval. Your action tonight is not to approve or disapprove, but a recommendation. And certainly your recommendation, uh, whatever that may be, can include, uh, uh, changing the language, and that can be considered by the council. If that's the desire of the planning commission, uh, as a result of tonight's action, that recommendation will be communicated to the city council. But, um, again, this is, I want to re-exercise, this, this language, um, uh, was a part of the recommendation of the ad hoc committee and provided and being communicated by staff.
Great, um, thank you, I think those are currently all the questions I have, I'm sure more will come up.
Okay, thank you, Ty, we'll go on to, uh, Vice Chair, Contreras Leo.
Uh, first I'd like to reiterate with, uh, Commissioner Fan right now about the language. And, you know, I, I know that you say it's a recommendation, but I, I think that lends to my question prior to this, but I, I'm in agreement about, I support changing the language and including that it's, you know, local hire and be specific of writing out who we're, we're including in that. But my question is, in the, in the past, when have the commission dealt with fees and numbers? When it comes to a project?
Um, do you recommend development agreement, which sometimes will have, um, numbers and, and figures in it that relates to finance? Um, I, maybe I can get help from, uh, staff here that's been here longer, if we have any ordinances that have dealt with fees?
I guess, Min, my question and maybe my confusion is, you know, was there a, a legal precedent or something that you needed to bring this to us for just a recommendation? Because I feel that even as a recommendation, and I'll speak for myself, I don't know if other colleagues feel the same, you know, I feel like we find ourselves here repeatedly where we don't have study sessions on things that are directly affecting our community. And, um, and here we are again, and I appreciate, you know, Fan's ten questions, because rightfully so, we all have these questions because we're trying to get through this while at the same time receiving twenty calls apiece, when we should have had a study session prior, all to make an educated guess. I know you say it's just a recommendation, but we all honor our, our spots here on the commission, and I think we want to make a very well informed and, and thoughtful recommendation, and not just approve it because it's what the ad hoc said they wanted. We know the council will make the decision, but if a recommendation is going to be made, then we should be able to recommend that language be inserted or changed. Um, and I, and I, and that, I just wanted to share how I felt about that. And, and really, you know, I understand we have approved other projects, um, but directly fees itself, I don't think this body typically does that, um...
I would agree with you.
Normally I agree, right, I, I'm sorry, this is Lisa. I agree as well, normally the planning commission does not look at fees. Um, your, uh, purview is about development projects and the process for development projects and getting things done. This came to you tonight because it's a change to the zoning code in chapter forty-one. And, um, the fee part, if you're not comfortable, you can just take that to the city council. I understand, if you're not, if you think it's too high, or you think you want to recommend something different, that's certainly within your purview as well.
I'm, I'm completely comfortable with it, but I was just kind of, it was different, it, it's not something we usually do.
And, no, you're correct, you're correct.
My other question is...
And I think, I think Lisa, I think Lisa's qualification of that for everybody is that, you know, fees are basically handled at the council level, not at the commission level. And that's, that I think we just have to keep, keep everybody in mind with that situation.
I, I, I understand that. Uh, my other question is, how often or how much have we collected of in lieu fees perhaps in the last five years? What has been our rate of success of collecting the actual commitments developers have made to pay in lieu fees?
So, commitment, um, I mentioned earlier, um, that amount is, um, estimated at about twenty-two million dollars. Those are projects that have been entitled, but have not paid the fee. Uh, but since the inception of the ordinance, and I'm gonna let our housing staff go into, uh, the details on the amount collected and, you know, how that fee is being used or has been used. I believe, uh, we collected about seventeen million dollars since the inception of the ordinance. Um, at this point, I'd like to, um, uh, hand over that question to Executive Director, uh, Stephen Mendoza.
Okay, and that question is a two-part, Mr. Mendoza, so if I can finish the other half of that?
Sure.
How much of the fees did we not collect?
Well, we have collected fees on every applicable project, up to seventeen point eight million dollars. There have been no housing developments that have skirted the fee.
Everybody ha, that has come through, let's say, the last two years, three years, has paid the in lieu fee?
Unless they have built onsite, or unless they've built offsite.
Right, correct, otherwise you need to pay before you pull your building permit.
Correct, the building permit not, would not be issued.
Okay, because I was under the understanding of two things. One, that it was not easy to collect the in lieu fee, one. And two, because of the pandemic that we're living through and we, our city does need revenue, we do need to move forward with building, and with that brings job opportunities for our residents, is that, that was a, a high consideration as to why to lower the fee. But if you're telling me that everybody pays and there's nothing outstanding, then, then I have no worry. It should be very easy to collect at the new rates that we're talking about today.
I didn't say it was easy for them to pay, but they do pay.
Okay. I didn't say you said that, I did. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Uh, Chair McLaughlin, uh, I have a few follow-ups that I think, uh, go, uh, along with Commissioner Conradwell's, um, questions. May I jump in now? Thank you.
You can jump in, you're okay with that Cynthia?
Are you done Cynthia?
Cynthia.
Yes, I am, I'm sorry, I had muted it, yes.
Okay, so, go ahead, go ahead Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, uh, so, in terms of, uh, the timing of collecting the in lieu of fee, in the, uh, language, the proposed language, you're striking, uh, the, you're striking the, at the, uh, that they're due at the first, when the first permit is issued. Uh, and it sort of becomes, I, I think it becomes a collection issue, and I think it also becomes an issue for, uh, projecting of affordable housing projects. Uh, it is something that I discussed with, um, with men before today's meeting. So I, I would, that's one of the items that I would, uh, recommend that, uh, or that I would ask my, um, colleagues on the commission to consider recommending going back to and not striking the issuance, uh, or the payment due at the issuance of the first building permit. Because I do think that it causes an issue for collections and an issue for projection of affordable housing, uh, project and units, uh, within the city in terms of timing. Uh, so that's, that's one item that...
Norma, Norma, what, what do you, can you, I, I wasn't quite, I didn't quite follow that.
Sorry, I, I don't think I was as articulate as I would like to be on that, so I'll go ahead and start again. Um, the issue is, and it, it was triggered by both Cynthia's question and, uh, Lisa's response, and that's, you know, is there a collection issue with these in lieu of fees? And, and Mr. Mendoza's response is, no, there really isn't because they're due in one lump sum when the building, when the first building permit is issued. And that's subject to the existing, uh, ordinance. But the proposed revision at, uh, you can find it at one thirteen, that, subsection three, timing of payment, they're striking, uh, prior to the issuance of the first building permit. It's just prior to the issuance of building permits for any construction which adds net residential unit. I think that creates ambiguity, uh, unless Lisa, you, you believe that it doesn't. I think that when you have the fir, uh, before issuing to the first building permit, I think it is the earliest time, um, that payment would be due, thus creating, uh, a potential issue for collection and also projection of affordable housing units. Was that clear, Mark?
So you're basically saying is, at the time when the first permit is issued, that's when the funds are due, whereas this one says, the statement in item three on one thirteen says, prior to issuance of building permits. Uh, so you're, you're just changing it to, at the time that the permit is pulled, that's when you expect it to get paid?
Well, I, I think, you know, maybe this is a, a good point for clarification. I understood earlier, um, from men that it did change and create sort of, you know, the, the lump sum would no longer be due at the issuance of the first building permit, uh, and it would create ambiguity. If that's incorrect, then I would like to hear from Lisa. If it is correct, then I think leaving first as being the, the earliest, uh, that the city can collect should remain. Especially as...
And maybe, maybe, maybe you want to address this, Min, or Stephen. This had to do with, uh, phased projects, was the idea behind the changing of this section? Because there's some projects that are quite large and they go through a development process in phases.
So, um, development impact fees such as, you know, HOO, um, or, um, park fees or school fees, um, and, you know, impact to our infrastructure. Normally, the fee is a pay as you go fee to where the, um, the fee is paid at the time of permit issuance for that specific development. The idea is that as an impact fee, um, you know, you want to make sure that the impact of the unit that's being built is being mitigated. Um, so thereby, uh, the, the thought behind that is that this would provide an opportunity for the, uh, housing development community to be able to, when they have a multi-phases project of, for example, eleven to twelve hundred units, that will be done in three or four phases. The current ordinance as it operates right now demands that even though you have these phasing, moment you pull, uh, a building permit, no matter if it's just for one unit or for twelve hundred units, you pay the impact fee for all twelve hundred units, when in fact that you are only building one unit. Uh, and if the eleven hundred units never took place or took place over a long time, the cost is borne up right up front. Um, the idea is, uh, and, and really going back to the principle of helping to, uh, create affordable housing, making it less, um, difficult to create affordable housing. And as you know, any project's funding is ultimately the linchpin to making a project either happen or it doesn't happen. By allowing the payment as we would collect for other, um, similar to what we collect for other development impact fee of pay as you go, that would allow projects to pay for what they build and the impact that they create based on the permit they hold.
Norma, are you okay with that response?
You know, I, uh, it is something, again, that I discussed with Min earlier, and I don't, I don't, if there was no issue with the developers paying that and addressing that with the first building permit, I don't see why there should be a contin, an issue going forward. The reason I say that is because it also impacts the city in affordable housing, uh, unit projection on the other side of things. It does, it takes much longer for the city to project those affordable housing unit development once the funds are committed and received, than it does a private development. once the funds are committed and received than it does a private developer to proceed with their projects. So I, I think that, um, no, I, I don't think that it, that it really addresses the issue of, um...
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, Norma. Um, you know...
Mark, can I ask, can I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I re-ask my question, please? I want to ask it in a different way.
Go ahead, Cynthia.
Mr. Mendoza, how about, tell me, how many or have all projects paid the fifteen-dollar fee?
No. That's a very good question. Since we've had fifteen dollars on the books for several years and no developer has paid since we raised it to fifteen dollars. They've not paid that fee.
What, can you tell me the average, what they are paying then?
They're paying the fee that was established, um, at the time, it, they, they paid the lower of the fee, um, traditionally in the other categories that we've had, under twenty units and above twenty units.
We're talking more close to ten?
Yeah. And that, that was part of the, the committee's streamlining of this ordinance is to establish three levels of fee that were easily understood by the public, the five, the ten, the fifteen.
Okay. So then the permits are not being pulled at the fifteen?
Correct. What we've basically done is we have discouraged developments by having the higher fee and by lowering the fee for a period of time, we are going to hopefully reactivate development and for these developers to start swinging hammers.
Thank you. That, obviously, I didn't ask correctly, so you, you hit the nail, the, um, hit for me. And I, I think that, that's why we're here today. And, um, you know, I think that there's a lot of projects that are now, right now, that have entitlements. And I don't know if all of them, including, like, some of the last big ones we, we saw, um, Main Place Mall. Are they going to get to benefit from the ten?
So Main Place Mall, Main Place Mall is a development project under, uh, a specific plan. And what means is that it has a separate set of zoning that have been established for that particular site and for the way development goes process within the specific plan area. Within their specific plan area, they have, um, uh, it addresses the payment of the HOO. And based on the approved adopted this plan's projects are assessed payment of the HOO and the HOO fee at the time that is, um, that the project is, uh, submit for development application. Meaning that, uh, whatever the HOO development structure and fee is applicable at the time that they submit application for permit of, uh, development for housing development project, that would be the structure that applies to their project. And that was approved as part of the specific plan. So if they were to approve old permits today and if the ordinance does not change, it's fifteen dollars. If they were to pull permits, um, if this ordinance were to be changed at some point in the future, uh, based on the, uh, vision of the specific plan, it would be the five dollars.
Well, I just think that with the times that we're in and I don't think this was foreseen, it kind of, you know, kind of leaves them out. Um, they are going to be, over time, probably you put many projects together, will surpass that and will continue to be a high-revenue output for our city. And I, I just feel that, uh, in this moment that they should, and it's obviously a recommendation on my behalf if my colleagues agree, but that they be extended just for this, uh, point in time the same. Um, and then after, of course, then it, it returns. But in all fairness, for people to get started and let's put people to work, it, it just doesn't seem right that those that are in the pipeline already, um, can't all be afforded the same opportunity. Um, I do have another question. Um, in the section where it talks about, um, vocal hire or code workers, I believe it was section code two six zero one, um, it's two six zero two, but two six zero three was left out. Was that for a reason?
I'm sorry, can you refer me to a page number, please?
You go, go to page, go to page one nineteen, one nineteen, and it's in section five, the developer opting to in lieu payments. And at the end, basically, it says, public contract code at, uh, two zero six, uh, two six zero one and, and two six zero two. But the previous draft had two six zero three also in there.
Thank you, Mark.
Um, this is the, um, table code that we found to be applicable to the project. Is there a recommendation that we include another provision?
Yes, I think there is a recommendation that we include two z-, two six zero three.
Right. It worked before.
What's that?
That it worked before.
Right, right. So I, so, what, Cynthia, do you have any other question? Go ahead.
No, Mark, I'm done. Thank you.
All right. Norma, I'm gonna come back to you. Sorry.
Uh, thank you. I appreciate it, Mark. Uh, because I do have, uh...
I'm, well, I'm, I'm, I want to, I want to close, I want to close first on the discussion that you brought to the table.
Okay.
With respect to the payment of fees. I mean, it, it's, it's my understanding, if I can say this, it's my understanding that, uh, most, when, when pulling the permits, every other developing, development fee is basically paid at the time that the payment, the, the permits are pulled. Is that, um, accurate statement, uh, Min? The permit fee is paid at the time the, the unit is pulled for the unit that's being built. As I'm, uh, as I mentioned, so if I have a project of twelve hundred units and I need to pay the fee, even if I'm only building the first phase, which is three hundred units, um, the normal impact fee that is generally paid is for the three hundred units. And you would pay as you go. The current HOO, um, uh, uh, basically established the requirement that the moment you pull permit for any unit, you have to pay the fee for the entire project.
Yeah, but that, but I, I, in all due respect, I, I hear what you said. But as an example, there was a project that was done several years back where there was actually a, uh, it's fifteen hundred units. Uh, it eventually became a three-phase unit, a three-phase project. And the fact is, is that originally, just as you said, the in lieu fees were due at the, at the beginning. And because of the fact that the, the project was turned into three phases, the in lieu fee was in fact divided by the three phases. And at the end of the day, delayed the affordable housing project that it was directly going to by a year to a year and a half, maybe even two years. Um, so, I mean, i- i- although it's written that way, it wasn't handled that way. So, you know, who, who takes the responsibility for that?
Uh, I believe the project you mentioned had a specific development agreement that was approved by city council. So it was not a sap-
Which, which, which said, which said all of the in lieu fees would be paid upfront.
But there was a development agreement that approved the payment of the payment. At least like in U S fifty B.
After, after, after the, after the, after the original contract was signed.
The development agreement allows for payment in phases and the ordinance required the payment upfront and the interpretation was made to allow the payment in phases.
Which, which says that, the ordinance says that we collected upfront for everything and yet the, the agreement that was made didn't do that. So, we're, how do we, how do we avoid moving forward? How do we avoid this, um, contradictory situation?
So, the current ordinance is, uh, being proposed to be modified to allow for phasing of payment. Uh, that is being recommended by the Aho committee. But what I'm hearing from the planning commission is that if, uh, there's a discussion to potentially revert back to the original language. Now, as you rightly corrected, that even with the original language, uh, the city council still was able to have an option of approving a development agreement that allows a separate mechanism for payment. And that is at the discretion of the city council.
Okay, so...
So you, you can recommend, you can recommend that the, the wording stay the same as it is if that, if that's the commission's viewpoint?
Yes.
Okay. Norma, does that help in what you were trying to achieve?
Yes, thank you, Mark.
So you get to, you get to bring that up in the, in the final discussion. How's that?
I will, I will. And I, I do have other, uh, points, but I, I didn't want to, uh, monopolize the conversation at the outset. So I'll let you, Mark, unless you'll give me, uh, some space now. Unless you want to proceed and come back to me.
Go ahead. If you'd like to, if you'd like to talk a little bit more or ask a couple more questions, I'm, I'm open for that. It's okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. I just always start and end up monopolizing the questions and I don't want to do that this time. Um, it's just, in terms of the rate, uh, going from, I, I realize, uh, based on, uh, Cynthia's comments earlier that the fee structure isn't something generally just for the planning commission. But in light of the different, um, correspondence that we've received and, uh, the staff report and the documents that I've reviewed, it seems to me that the going down from fifteen dollars to five dollars is a rather extreme move, um, in the opposite direction of where we should be going. And in comparison to what other cities are doing, not just in Orange County, but in neighboring counties, you know, we are right at the sweet spot of ten to fifteen dollars, uh, per square foot in the in lieu fee. So I would strongly, um, recommend that we not go down to five dollars in any instance and that we, I, I think ten dollars is a fair compromise for the square foot, um, in lieu of fee, both for entitled projects and for, uh, new projects going forward. I think Mr. Mendoza's, uh, statement earlier today is really important, uh, to consider that individual, that developers have paid that. And for instance, the Main Place development is, you know, it has agreed to pay that upfront, um, in one lump sum based on their DA, uh, at fifteen dollars. I, and I, it's hard for me to believe that Santa Ana is, um, not a desirable, uh, location for, for folks, developers to invest their funds in, that we would have to lower our in lieu fee to five dollars a square foot when neighboring cities like Irvine are closer to fifteen, sixteen dollars a square foot. Uh, so that's one, one point that I think is really important to consider. Um, not so much a question because I did have the opportunity to discuss this earlier with, with men. Um, on, on the safety and code enforcement issue, uh, that I think Commissioner Rivera brought up earlier, um, today, I, I wonder, and this is a question, is there's a way to tighten that language while it is clear to, I think, um, those that interpret the ordinance to say, well, you know, the affordable, affordable housing funds or the inclusionary fund is only supposed to be used for affordable housing units, that perhaps, you know, uh, le-, not stating that expressly leaves room for interpretation, uh, and perhaps, you know, too much ambiguity that would allow folks in the future to say, well, it doesn't expressly say that, so maybe we can use it here for this code enforcement project. That doesn't necessarily tie back to an affordable housing development. So I would, you know, um, recommend if that's, um, something that, you know, um, can be done so that it just expressly states that those funds would be used only for affordable housing, uh, projects.
Steve Mendoza, can you comment on that, please?
Um, on which part of it, Mr. Chair? Will...
Steve, go ahead, Norma.
No, the, no, I think that he should, go ahead, Mark, unless you want me to...
My, 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 I might concern, my question is relative to Norma's, uh, use of the, uh, code enforcement, use of the funds to support code enforcement and other activities, other than directly funds going. Okay?
Certainly. Our job as, as a housing, uh, division of a city is to provide decent, decent safe and sanitary housing while also increasing, improving and preserving the supply of affordable housing. But we also have to protect that supply of affordable housing and code enforcement is a direct link to that. One of our obligations of using code enforcement would be to clean up the neighborhoods around affordable housing, onsite or offsite of the affordable housing project. So we see a direct link between code enforcement and the supply of decent safe and sanitary housing opportunities.
Norma?
Uh, so, if, if I heard you correctly, Mr. Mendoza, you're, you're saying that you don't want to, uh, that the language that I'm suggesting or proposing could limit your activities too much so that it wouldn't allow you to use funds for, uh, I, I don't know, for, uh, properties or...
Well, let, let me give you an example.
Surrounding the affordable housing units. Is that, is that accurate?
Sure. Let me give you an example of a, of a two-pronged situation. Let's say you have a ten-plex in a neighborhood that is really impacting the neighbors. It's blighted, it's dilapidated, it needs to be changed, the ownership needs to change, and maybe the management needs to change. So the first step would be to get the code enforcement involved. And the second step would be to get a new buyer in there to rehab and convert the units into affordable units. It's a package, it's a team approach to improving neighborhood.
Okay. So you're saying that the, that it, you shouldn't restrict it in the way that I'm suggesting because you want to be able to use it in the future to create, uh, affordable housing? Uh, uh, so can you, can you tie it back to the original question?
Sure. We, we would like the, like the paragraph remainder is to be flexible for our future expenditures to ensure that we can improve these neighborhoods where we're investing our affordable housing dollars.
Okay. And I think that's, and that's exactly, I think, the concern, right? That there, there could be too much flexibility and that the fund would not be used specifically to target affordable housing, uh, house, affording, affordable housing communities, uh, or units specifically. So, you know, while I understand that there's a great need, uh, and there is a lot of need across the city. I think when you look at the numbers and the statistics, we are a, you know, predominantly low-income community. And so the funds could be used, you know, arguably in seventy percent of, of our state. But I think the funds have been targeted for a specific purpose. And so I think the recommendation remains that they, that they should be tied for that purpose. If we're asking developers to fund specifically affordable housing units and to maintain those so they remain a livable, healthy space, then that should be the language in the ordinance. And that should be reflected in the ordinance. So I stand by my recommendation.
Yes. And that's where maintaining comes in. How do you enforce maintenance without code enforcement?
Right. But the, the distinction, though, Mr. Mendoza, is that you're, you're saying, you know, we should be able to use these funds to maintain a greater potentially, you know, area or scope than the affordable housing units. And I think that's where, you know, i- i- it, it becomes an issue of how you're using the funds that were specifically targeted for affordable housing units. And there, and I think there is potentially even, you know, legal issues there, but I, I, I defer to Lisa on that.
Chair, uh, may I just ask for clarification based on Commissioner Garcia's, um...
Go ahead.
Comments?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, uh, Commissioner Garcia, I think I understand what you're saying. And so part of the concern is, we're saying that we want to, um, put, sorry, I'm getting a lot of feedback from somewhere. Um, you know, either convert existing market rate housing to affordable units. We want to protect... affordable units, and we want to make sure that these affordable units are actually humane and sanitary. But we don't want this quote "one-time program" for code enforcement, quality of life, and general health and safety activities going to, you know, high-income neighborhoods to protect those kinds of general health and safety activities. Unless we can show that, for example, this ten-plex is being converted to affordable housing and that we're applying the quality of life and general health and safety activities or using those funds specifically for those developments that are being converted to affordable, you know, there's no nexus there. We want to make sure that whenever these funds are being expended, we can show, yes, this is the affordable housing unit that we're protecting, this is the affordable housing unit that we're converting, or that this is the affordable housing unit that we're maintaining. I think I under, that's exactly how I feel.
That's right. Thank you.
Yeah, because I don't want, no problem, right? You know, we don't want this money, you know, a lot of neighborhoods are beautiful and fantastic, but, and, and it's not about staff or anyone, but I don't want someone, you know, ten years from now coming in and saying, well, actually, this neighborhood can use some new trees, but it's actually not directly tied and there's no nexus to it being affordable, defined affordable. So I think we do need to provide some language that says, you know, there has to be a proven nexus or there has to be a proven connection. Perhaps you want to add some language that says that the activities need to be related to city-assisted affordable housing projects or something to that nature?
Yeah.
My, my recommendation, Commissioner, if, and if it, it may be that we add right at the end language that says that activity would be to further enhance and promote affordable housing development.
I think they're focusing on city-assisted projects.
But as Director Mendoza indicated, there will be projects early on that may not have yet received funding, but it is part of an affordable housing development proposal moving forward.
I'm not sure I understand what you just said there, Men.
What I'm trying to say is that at the end, you can create that nexus and that focus by saying that the enforcement program and activity have to further enhance and promote development of affordable housing. So creating nexus between the enforcement action and the enhancement and creation of affordable housing.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
I, I think that, could the city, can you, can you define affordable housing, how you guys see it? Because I feel like we're not on the same page. What affordable housing is defined for you guys, for our city, share that with us. What does that look like?
I'm going to let our in-house residence expert explain this to you, but basically, it's income-based, and it's income-based on percentage of earning in comparison to the county average median income. So Judson, are you available on the line to explain that answer, please?
Yes, of course. Thank you, thank you, Men. Affordable housing, as it's defined on page 17, the total housing cost paid by a qualifying household shall not exceed the fraction of gross income specified for that income, the income level for that, for that household. At its most basic level, affordable housing is housing that's, that's where a family is paying no more than thirty percent of their monthly adjusted income towards their rent. That is the basis of which we use for the, to calculate rent for affordable housing units at various income levels, including income levels that you see under page 17.
I ask that question because when Commissioner Garcia is speaking about preserving dollars for affordable housing, we get responses of code enforcement trees. Affordable housing, our people, the people that need affordable housing are, have an obvious need. And if we don't have enough where, because, okay, fine, we've met our revenue numbers, but yet we still have two to three families in that affordable unit because they, it's still not, there's still not enough for them. And the number may be a certain number, but at the end of the day, we still have people that have to live that way because there's not enough affordable units available. So to me, and I don't know if my colleagues are thinking, well, if you're putting money into this pot that's for affordable housing, to me, that looks like a voucher. To me, that looks like, that's even what happened with Mini Street many years ago. I don't know if anybody here remembers. Mini Street was thrashed. It was a mess. But they turned it into affordable quali, quality of life living into Cornerstone Village. So to me, that's good for affordable dollars, housing dollars. You know, unfortunately, the city has always had an issue with not being able to get enough code enforcement officers, and that should be a priority, but I don't know if that's the right place to say it's going to come from this pot of money. And I, that's, that's kind of what I'm hearing from my colleagues.
Okay. So I guess one question I've got with this discussion that we have going on here is that, I mean, when we look at the great scheme of things and, and the spending for, the money is coming into the roof, how much money is actually being used to, for code enforcement? I mean, out of the HOO budget?
None today.
Yeah, okay. So none today, and potentially down the line, possibly a small amount?
I would have to let Director Mendoza provide what, what, what potentially would be programmed, but it would be a very minute amount. And code enforcement is a major part of the city's function. I believe this is intended to direct towards affordable housing development. And I, and, you know, it's, it's clear that, you know, creating that nexus is necessary, and, you know, I think that's a very good discussion that the commission is having.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could add, this is Steve Mendoza. The, the idea is not to give a number for code enforcement, is to, it is to understand that there are administrative costs in running this fund. We spend money on developing agreements with future users of the fund, so there are legal, there's legal time involved, there is administrative time. We pay a portion of Judson's salary with this. There are other things that this money goes to, and it's to run the fund itself. So there will always be administrative costs of running a fund, and so we want to make sure that that stays at a certain acceptable level, and we would include code enforcement in that if the city council recommended that change.
And that's, and that's what I expected, Steve. And I, I wanted to hear, wanted to hear, just as you said, the spending is for administrative costs and a variety of those costs. And it is, it is something that's a percentage of the, of the funds coming in.
Right. The, the administration of inclusionary housing fees, we have nine million that we've got out to the public. We have another 5.2 million to go that's committed to future development, but they haven't broken ground yet. And so we have fourteen million dollars that we're managing out there, and it does take staff time.
Okay. Perfect.
Can I make a comment on that?
Norma, does that, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I, I think the administrative fees are covered in the existing ordinance, right? It's the last sentence of A1. So I don't think there's any dispute that, you know, administrative fees need to be related to the administration of the fund should come out of the fund. I think that more than reasonable, it's expected. I think, again, the question is, and I think Cynthia put it also beautifully in terms of, maybe there's a disconnect, right? And, and it's not saying that we don't want code enforcement to enforce and to ensure the quality of these units, and so did I, but, but I do, I, I think that the language offered by Lisa is, is strong language that we ought to recommend to, to the council in this ordinance.
Okay, I understand, I understand. Do you have any other, any other questions at this point in time of staff? Commissioner Garcia?
I believe just one last one. How does, how does the decrease of the in lieu fee or the HOO fee from the proposed fifteen dollars to five dollars or even ten dollars, how does it affect the affordable housing pipeline that you have been looking at strategically? How, how will that ultimately affect the numbers in the, in the pipeline?
I can respond to that. If you're talking about affordable housing projects in the pipeline, the ones that have been committed funds, is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm asking, no, I'm actually asking, you know, from a projection and strategic plan, you know what's in the pipeline based on the funds committed, either receive, those receive, and then you have, you know, a projection based on funds committed, like the twenty-two million dollars that have been committed, that may be reduced down by a third. Then you have, you know, based on what you've projected long-term, based on the developments and people that you, you know, developers that you're in conversations with, how will those units, or how, what will that look like if you go from fifteen dollars to five dollars?
Well, we, as a practice, the community development agency does not commit money that we do not have. We don't enter into agreements or commitment letters with developers to subsidize their affordable housing projects unless we've already received the in lieu payment from different developers.
Right. And I, I completely understand that. I think it would be ill-advised if you did enter into agreements without having the funds on hand. So the question really becomes, from a strategic standpoint, if you reduce your in lieu of or HOO fee by two-thirds, right, and that starts, you know, is effective on X date, let's say, you know, 2021, what does that do to your affordable housing pipeline? Are we, are we expecting that your developers are going to triple, and so your projections remain the same, and you're going to be able to, to deliver the same amount of affordable housing, you know, units and/or rehab that, that you were already projecting or estimating? Or are we thinking, you know what, we're still going to have the same amount of development, and we're just going to see a third reduction in the amount of fees that the city has to be able to invest in affordable housing? What, what is it that you guys have considered from a strategic standpoint will happen once these numbers are reduced?
Well, from a strategic plan, you have a fifteen-dollar fee right now that no one's paying, so I'm not getting any revenue coming into the affordable housing fund.
Right. But my understanding of why, why folks haven't paid, and I just, I just want to address this because I think it's really important, it's not that developers are not, are refusing to pay it. I think, you know, your, your statement earlier, the Main Place will be paying fifteen dollars of the developer, the Main Place. It's rather an issue of timing, and COVID is now obviously at issue. So I think that's an important qualification, right, that these projects, isn't that they've been sitting on projects for two years saying, well, I refuse to pay the HOO fee, or is that what you're receiving, is that, is that the comment that you're making?
Yeah, that is the comment I'm making. By stimulating the economy or stimulating the ability for them to pay the inclusionary housing fee, thus giving me more funds now as opposed to never getting them or getting them at a later date.
Okay, so I'll, I'll let you go back to the strategic answer, but I think that, are you, is your position, then, that all of these developers will go away unless you go down to five dollars and that nobody will invest in the city at the fifteen dollars, other than the Main, Main Place developers?
Well, I can only comment by what we've seen, but we have not seen a developer pay the current fifteen-dollar fee.
And, and are you saying that that's because they're sitting on permits, or are sitting on development, on projects, on, but they're just not, the last step is to pull that first permit and they're not doing it? That that's the last step for all of the current pending projects?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, and, and COVID is probably part of it too since February, but prior to that, probably the fee alone.
There are currently eight projects pending, is that right? Is that right? That's what you guys, uh?
Yeah, it was eight, it was stated that there were eight projects.
And Mr. Mendoza, you're, you're comfortable representing to date that all eight projects will have been waiting for months just because they don't want to pay the fifteen dollars?
We have, during Men's outrage, Men had explored a lot of these options with the development community and the affordable housing community, and what could kickstart development. And as you know, the city council formed a committee to actually do this research as well, and this is what we're coming up with, is right now the fifteen dollars is prohibitive to development.
Is, is cost prohibitive to development because of the pandemic, or because?
No, because of the high fees.
Okay. I, if you can't see, answer the rest of the question on the strategic vision.
Well, the vision is that affordable housing cannot exist without funding sources. And right now, our, our balance in our affordable housing fund is about 1.7 million dollars. That's what's available today. That doesn't increase unless someone builds building permits.
And so you're comfortable with saying, even though Main Place, the developers of Main Place are willing to pay fees, and they are, because under the development agreement, will pay fifteen dollars per square foot, that they find the value in the city to place that money and to build that stock, that we're, we're confident that no other developer finds that value in the city? And that's troubling to me, to be honest. That's very troubling to me and very concerning. Because if Irvine and other neighboring cities can charge that and more, Brea, San Juan, I think that that, that becomes a bigger issue for the city, you know? I thought we were a very attractive city to developers.
That's exactly what we're trying to do, trying to make ourselves attractive to developers during this COVID period of time and incentivize and get hammer swinging.
But I think that the point is that we've already been attracted. That's why you have a pipeline. And I understand that you have to address the economic, economic issues brought on by the pandemic, but to say, you know, we're going to cut it by a third, I think it's sending the wrong message. But I, I think that, that is all for me. Thank you, Mr. Mendoza, and thank you, Chair McLaughlin.
Okay. For the sake of discussion, I'd like to, I'll, I'll cover some highlights from my standpoint. I think there's a number of discussions that have been put forth by the commissioners that I'll come back, when we have the time to come back. But I'm going to just carry on a little bit with what Norma was talking about and just basically say that prior to the fifteen-dollar rate, there was a lower rate for inclusionary housing. And I know that people paid that lower rate. I mean, at one point in time, one rate that I remember was about eight dollars and fifty cents, and then there was also a twelve-dollar fee, if I'm not mistaken. We did receive funds against those rates, did we not? So we did receive, yeah.
Thank you, Min. This is Justin Brown, Housing Minister. Yeah, we received 15.8 million dollars since the year 1516, where developers have paid nine dollars and thirty-five per square foot.
Nine dollars and thirty-five cents was the rate that was in there before, and I think we had one developer that I think had it at eight dollars and fifty cents back in, this is 2015 to current time. And what was the total amount that was received by the city?
Fifteen point eight million.
Fifteen, sixteen, I didn't, fifteen point eight million?
Fifteen point eight million.
Okay, and what we're looking at at this point in time, if I go back to the numbers that Min referred to, we're looking at something in the order of magnitude of about fifteen million, fourteen point seven million, which is two-thirds, which is two-thirds of the current outlook of 22.3 million. So, you know, we're looking at about the same thing, so the sense I would get on this thing would be that the ten-dollar fee is probably a reasonable number based on what previous history has brought us. What I'd like to do is just for sake of discussion and because we're going to bring it back to the commission after we have the public hearing, is there anybody else that would like to have a, raise a question with staff at this point in time?
Chair?
Commissioner Garcia?
Commissioner Fan?
Okay, Commissioner Fan?
Just a clarification so that, you know, we have all the numbers correct. As staff mentioned, although there have been eight projects entitled that are subject to the current fee at fifteen dollars per square foot, not one of them have paid that fifteen dollars per square foot as of today, right?
That is correct.
And to follow up, the previous two, so prior to the fifteen dollars per square foot, we had, and I think the number was, collected about seventeen or eighteen million dollars in fees. How many projects paid those in lieu fees? Like, what was the total number of projects?
Twelve of them. Twelve projects have amounted to seventeen point eight million dollars.
Okay, and were they big projects, all about the same size, or?
A little bit all over the place, but all of them were more than twenty years.
Okay, so we don't have a huge number of projects that have actually paid. Now, with the current new ordinance, so I guess the oldest project that's around is what, five years? That haven't paid, they're still just sitting on an empty lot?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so that's 22 million dollars thereabouts that we don't have in our pocket, and we have zero dollars in our pocket right now.
We have 1.7 in the pipeline.
But the 1.7 is from the previous in lieu fee?
Correct, correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. And how many projects or how many units can that 1.7 million dollars pay for?
That is, I mean, we don't usually pay for units directly, we usually are layered in with other funding sources, but we don't think it would go very far for a developer. It would not be attractive enough for a developer to ask for 1.7 million right now. They usually ask, their ask is a little bit greater than that when they're developing in our city. And when we have enough money, let's say five or six million or some land, we do what's called a request for proposal. We throw the money out to the public and let them propose on the amount of money and/or land that we have in our current inventory.
Okay, and just a final question so that I get a better picture, because a lot of this discussion has been going to, well, people, you know, developers aren't, quote unquote, "permitted" to build and it's been a long time. When are these projects going to lose their entitlement if they've been sitting around for so long? Or do you see that they will just go away because they don't want to pay the fees?
So, the normal entitlement for a project, if they don't pull permit, is for twelve months unless it includes a tentative track map, which follows the tentative track map timeline, or approximately two years. Subsequent to that, if the project still hasn't pulled permit, they would be obtaining approval for a time extension, and that also requires going in front of the cities for review and approval for a time extension. So, that would be, you know, some of these projects may have ran up through the time period and received extension, and other projects recently received approval, and so therefore they still have time left on their entitlement.
Okay, thank you.
But at some point, you're right, they go afire if no extension is given, or if it hasn't been pulled.
Okay, thank you. That was all, Chair.
Okay, I'm going to go quickly down the list. Garcia, Morrissey, Nguyen, Rivera, Fan, Dan, Cynthia Contreras Leo, any last questions to staff?
None at this time.
None for me. I actually have one.
All right, Cynthia, go ahead.
Sorry, I guess, Mr. Mendoza, if you are able to collect now at nine, I think, just to have a better understanding, the drop is so huge, why not drop it to ten? If you are collecting at that level versus dropping and surpassing that and just going straight to five?
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Stephen stepped away to the restroom. That question, I think it reverts back to what Min was stating from the outset regarding the direction that staff received from the new ad hoc committee that was formed to set the new fee going forward at five dollars per square foot.
Do we know why that ad hoc committee came up with that, or how, what they based that off of? Because it's my understanding, there's local cities around us that have zero fees. I believe Anaheim has zero fees, if I'm correct. So, I'm trying to understand how we even got in this position to begin when not very many people in the state have these fees. So, if we are collecting nine, I would just, it would be helpful to understand why the five.
As I mentioned, Vice Chair, I mentioned earlier, this threw off a discussion on the fee because of the history of the various fees, as you know, for small projects it's five dollars and then for larger projects, it went anywhere in between five and fifteen dollars until it really settled down at fifteen dollars in 2015. So during the discussion by the committee, there were whole oaths of discussion as to where to reset the fee, and committee felt that five dollars was the number based on the current economic conditions and the goal of attracting new development to the city that it's, you know, would be the appropriate fee to recommend to the city council.
Okay.
All right, Cynthia, is that it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll finish our discussion with staff. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
Chair, sorry, I had to step away for a moment, but we did receive forty written communications, of which thirty-seven were in opposition and three were in support. Those were all received by five o'clock PM and distributed to the commissioners.
Okay, and Min, one question that I have to ask on that is that there was, it appeared there was a form letter that was being circulated in the forty that we received and that pertained to diverting funds from the who to public safety, and there is no foundation on that particular statement, there is no funds being diverted for public safety at this point in time, is that correct?
That is correct, and as this goes back to the discussion that two commissioners, the Vice Chairman, Commissioner Garcia, was discussing is to create the nexus on the spending to specifically indicate that it's for affordable housing purpose. So, as I mentioned earlier during my presentation, the funding has always been for affordable housing, is managed by the Community Development Agency and now the Community Development Agency and the Housing Authority, as well as the City Council, and moving forward will continue to be that way. There is no proposed diversion of the fund for public safety discussion as alleged by the letters.
So the letters are just based on wrong information and not based on any foundation of how we run the city and how we run the affordable housing budgets?
Correct.
False news, as they would say. Okay. With that, we're going to open up the public hearing, and Madam Secretary, would you please announce the first person that's going to speak? And please note that each and every one of you, please state your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Caller with the last four digits, 2361, you're now unmuted.
Hi, this is John Hannah, and I am a Government Affairs Representative for the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, and I live on Lowry Street in the City of Orange. I can throw a rock across Fairhaven and get to Santa Ana. I'm speaking both in support but also requesting a modification of this proposal. We heard from staff that the primary goal here is to incentivize more development of housing in Santa Ana. Well, if that's the case, you know, you could make that argument for new housing, for new projects, but if you're talking about people who already came here with their eyes wide open and committed to paying fifteen dollars, it's a hard case to make that they need to, that this is anything other than a gift. So what are we kind of working on here? The idea is, I heard, to maybe they'll actually do what they committed to do and actually pull their permits for those that have entitlements, but that's something they probably should have done before. If we're going to give benefits to somebody coming in, this is just the best opportunity to try and realize another goal, which is articulated but only in an advisory manner, which said that those people who are availing themselves of this should, are encouraged to and should have a skilled and trained workforce. We heard somebody, one of the commissioners, say, well, if we lower it for everybody, we're going to, on those entitlements, we're going to hear and see hammers swinging, projects going. But the majority, the vast majority of those people who will be swinging hammers won't be Santa Ana residents, won't be representatives, or won't be graduates of Garden Grove and Santa Ana Unified or the Rancho Santiago Community College District, and won't be veterans. And they will be paid so little that they will actually qualify to live in affordable units. So I think what we ought to do is take this and say, you know, we ought to require this, the language that two of the commissioners, Contreras Leo and Fan, both mentioned, to change the language from "should" to "shall," and then what we'll, to have a skilled and trained workforce, but also to have, as Commissioner Fan talked about, a workforce that is focused on prioritizing qualified Santa Ana residents, graduates of the Santa Ana and Garden Grove Unified School Districts and the Rancho Santiago Community College District, and veterans. Then what you're doing is you're creating a workforce, whether it's union or non-union, that will be most likely to be able to afford to purchase homes or units in the city of Santa Ana and not just have people that you don't know and that aren't going to be able to be making the money to be able to buy here. So I think the solution is pretty easy.
Caller, it's been three minutes, please wrap up your comments.
And I would urge those modifications.
Thank you, John. Next caller?
Caller with the last four digits, 7988.
Good evening, Chair McLaughlin and commission members. My name is Tim O'Brien, address 5141 California Avenue in Irvine. I'm with Legacy Partners, we're the developer for the Sunflower Project in the South Coast Metro area of Santa Ana. You all may recall that the Sunflower Project was unanimously approved by planning commission and city council last summer, and it was widely supported not only by council but by the local community, and it took a long time for us to earn that support. Since our approvals, we've worked diligently to develop construction drawings, we invested a lot of money and we're through, the plan check and permit ready now. You know, we were so close to closing on the land and starting construction until COVID hit, and it's just, it's just all mapped. Now the rents are down, values are down, and by five to 10%, and the project is no longer feasible, you know, based upon the current economics. So it's not really a matter of if we want to, we really can't. You know, I appreciate the city's efforts to create a stimulus with a fee reduction. I would request that you extend that fee reduction to five dollars to those projects that are entitled as well. And, you know, Sunflower represents a project that can start in the next two months, it provides immediate jobs, it provides city fees at arguably the most difficult time and the greatest impact due to COVID, because we're right, you know, at the forefront of this storm. You know, I also want to point out that, you know, at five dollars, the Sunflower Project will generate about $900,000 to the who fund. I think we may be, can move forward, be the first one that actually funds it. And then we also have other community benefits to the San Point neighborhood, Santa Ana Unified School District, and we have an agreement for union jobs, and so anyways, we appreciate, I appreciate your consideration of the matter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
Commissioners, if I could just clarify, the reduction for the entitled projects is a five-dollar reduction from fifteen to ten, not to five dollars.
Thank you. Okay, the next caller?
Caller with the last four digits, 9451.
Hi, good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Hi, my name is Yisimir Ramos, I'm calling today as a Santana resident, and I just wanted to comment that, the first is that there were over eighty-eight letters submitted to the county on this item, that's all over the thirty-seven that were reported by staff. So I want to take a moment to name the eighteen organizations that wrote the fee in opposition in case you did not receive them. in case you did not receive them all. Those letters of opposition were sent to you by the Kennedy Commission, Latino Health Access, Chief for Santa Ana Building Healthy Communities, Ciudad Community Land Trust, Clergy and Liberty United for Economic Justice, Brazilians Orange County, the Cambodian Family, Triste Cooperación Santana, Hope Builders, National Alliance on Mental Illness Orange County, NAMI, Santa Ana Early Learning Initiative, the Cimballo Lacy and Accion, Sullivan Lacy and Accion, the Public Law Center, the Southern Legal Aid Society, Natiro Local Eleven, and St. Oka Hospital. There were also over seventy letters of opposition submitted to the commission via input by Cincinnati residents. And I say this because I believe it's very important that you're aware of how heavily exposed many of these amendments are from the community and the organizations that serve Santana residents. There were very valid concerns really in these letters and also by members of this commission over the diversion of funds. So thank you, commissioners, for asking those very critical questions. But these letters were also in direct opposition to a decrease in funds. As we're in a, we're, we're in a pandemic and we know that the need for affordable housing is going to be much greater than it already has been. And all of these later, letters show you that residents, individuals that needed economic relief during this pandemic, not developers. And I just want to thank you all for all of the questions that you asked. As a former chair of the housing commission, I also invite all of you to take a very close look at the quarterly housing division reports. I really wish that staff would have showed those to you ahead of this discussion because you can clearly see that how these inclusionary housing funds are used on a according basis to fund affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Next caller?
Caller with the last four digits, five, zero, six, eight.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Carla Quarrish, and I live in Santa Ana for more than thirty years, and I live in Henniger Park neighborhood. And I'm calling in opposition. I think you guys, I'm all for development, like I'm all for building housing, there has to be affordable housing, and a true affordable housing. Right now there is at least twenty-one neighborhoods that are rent burdened. So it doesn't make sense to build housing that we can't afford. And also like for us to cater to developers, it does not also make sense. I know that Santa Ana is a ver, I'm also a homeowner as well. So it's, I don't believe that Santa Ana, that we only have very limited options for developers. I, I know that it's, no, we could do better. And also, it does not make sense to decrease the in lieu fees, even from fifteen to ten or five, because that's the same amount of money we're going to use to build affordable housing. Now, the in lieu fees is because the developer does not want to build affordable housing within the unit, which that to me seems very insulting, because it feels that they don't want the luxury home, people that are apparently rich in order to afford that, rub elbows with the poor because they're in affordable housing. So just the fact that they only have to provide fifteen percent, which is not even, it's three units out of twenty, for affordable housing, which means people are barely trying to make it, they don't want to even provide those three units out of twenty. They'd rather pay the in lieu fees so they don't have to live with the rich. And, and now like to add insult to injury, they want to pay even less than that. So how are we paying, how can we move forward when our, like communities are hurting, twenty-one percent, twenty out of the sixty-five neighborhoods are rent burdened? How can you look at them? How could you look at us and say, I'm moving forward with this luxury development? Well, you guys are going to have to move out because rents are going to increase as soon as the luxury families come in and can afford more compared to what I can afford. I don't know how you, you could look at families and say that, well, you don't belong there, even though that you worked here for more than twenty years and you helped Santa Ana feel what Santa is today. It is because of your culture that people want to come to Santa Ana, but you can't live here. It's just very insulting and it's just hurtful. And I know we could do better, and if these developers don't want to work with us, there's others that will. We've made it through this far, and we can make it without these developers, without having to sell our people because they do this procedure. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Next caller?
Caller with the last four digits, eight, zero, zero, eight.
Thank you. Thank you, that sounds like me. Thank you, Chair, Planning Commissioners. My name is Steve Lamai. I'm the executive officer for the Building Industry Association of Orange County. We're a nonprofit trade association representing over eleven hundred members, over a hundred thousand individuals within the home building industry. I am calling in this evening first to say thank you to those staff members, as well as council members, who brought this proposal forward. We did submit a letter, and I do want to reiterate that this is exactly what the business community needs right now for so many reasons. This is a great step, but as I said multiple times, housing remains a critical issue in California, and it's only going to get worse, and it's been getting worse based on the pandemic. We need roughly a hundred and eighty thousand units per year, and we're producing roughly eighty thousand on average. If you look what the governor wants, he wants roughly five hundred thousand units per year, which is about three point five million by 2025. So we're drastically undersupplied, and this is causing a major spike in home prices across the region. On top of this, as everyone knows, we're in the middle of the pandemic, and so residents around the country, especially in California, are being asked to self-quarantine and of course limit their access to work. One thing we can't forget is that when this is over, however that looks, we will still be in a housing crisis. We've testified numerous times on this new policy. We, along with many of our builder members, have stated that adding fees onto the development process can only stifle or ultimately raise the cost of housing, risking the loss of units, both, both market rate and affordable. And this seemingly is the case. I do want to clarify that, I think it was the June second city council meeting, staff mentioned that since the 2015 increase of the WHO fee, from at the time, you know, averaging under ten dollars, if, if I hear correctly, up to the fifteen, thousands of units have been approved, but not one has pulled the higher WHO fee. And then on top of that, the city has met their current affordable housing requirement through the recent cycle. So because of this and the current pandemic, staff has laid out a very clear picture in the staff report as to why it's going to benefit the city, your affordable housing fund, the Santa Ana economy, and the development community to lower the fee to five dollars a square foot for those who have not applied to the city, and we could not agree more. However, we are asking for those projects in the pipeline, the projects that have been approved have not yet pulled permits to also be given that five dollar fee. The pandemic, the economic factors that have been shut and laid out by staff do not just affect those who have not applied yet to the city. They greatly affect those who have put out a lot of capital to build in that city, and they have not committed to any dollar of fee that I'm aware of. And staff, maybe you can clarify that. The fee is technically a changing dollar amount, obviously we're discussing it here today. So we, behalf, on behalf of the business coalition on the letter that I submitted, we respectfully ask that entitled projects do receive the five dollar fee compared to the proposed ten dollars for the, again, the entitled project, and also the proposed five dollar fee, and also twelve months to pull those permits. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Next caller?
Caller with the last four digits, eight, four, seven, seven.
Dale Helvig, Santa Ana resident for thirty years, Ward Three. This is a gift to the developers. Reducing the fees will result in a seven point six billion dollar reduction in fees collected for the entitled projects, which, you know, if we're looking at trying to improve the livability of the low-income housing, that, that's roughly five thousand dollars for fifteen hundred low-income homes that we're leaving on the table. The, the developers have seven options that they can choose from, from the inclusionary requirements. The first two, I would be interested to know if they've ever used outside of the Toll Brothers on Main Street, which is the onsite construction. The construction of a low-income affordable housing unit by Berkeley study is roughly five hundred thousand, or four hundred thousand dollars a door. So at an inclusionary housing fee of five dollars a square foot for a hundred unit project at a thousand, thousand square foot per unit, that's a half a million dollars versus the four to six million that is required if they paid the full inclusionary housing fee, in lieu fee. So what's a developer going to do? Is he going to spend money to build the onsite construction of the low-income housing? Or is he going to pay the in lieu fees? At fifteen dollars, half million versus six million, that's quite a deal, you know? So they're going to still come and build. They're getting a deal on the incentives for parking and setbacks and height as it is, and I don't understand why we keep on bending over backwards to bring these developers in when we already have, like they said, eight projects on the books, forty-four hundred units, twenty-two point three million dollars that will be coming in if we don't do anything right now. They'll still build their projects. I heard Legacy is having problems, I know Hampton Inn had problems, but they'll work through those things. And so to continue to reduce it down to five dollars is not correct. So I hope we either eliminate the in lieu fee, force them to do onsite construction, or keep it at fifteen dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Next caller?
Caller with the last four digits, seven, two, seven, three.
Good evening, good evening, Chairman and members of the commission. I'm Ernesto Medrano, and I'm the council representative for the LA and Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council, and we represent a hundred and forty thousand hardworking, essential service construction workers. And I, I want to echo some of the remarks that John Hanna made on being interested in spirit of moving this along. I won't repeat them, but I think to the extent that this policy should be supported with, with the recommendations that the commission made of putting the word shall in lieu of the encourage and should, as well as clarifying the public contract code with zero one to twenty-six, zero three. We believe strongly and firmly that at a time like this where unemployment is double digits, businesses should be incentivized, but all boats should rise, all boats should be, should be able to go up. In this situation, workers have to be part of the equation when we start to talk about housing and affordable housing. And a worker should be able to earn the wage that allows him or her to purchase a rented dwelling that he or she is building. So again, I want to emphasize the fact, and I think I mentioned this when we spoke in the past, that Latinos dominate the residential sector comprising two-thirds of the workforce. Yet in the residential sector, construction workers earn an average of twenty-four percent less per year than other types of jobs and less than have get health insurance. So I think it's important to start looking at the economic situation and the co-situations with workers, and I, we strongly believe that providing a skilled and trained workforce that provides an opportunity for apprenticeship programs to be open and available for the residents and the, with a local hire provision, that would be a true and real local hire veterans. Our home support program is, is also something that we could be talking about, how do we recruit veterans from the military that just came out so they can come and make careers out of construction? For every one construction job, it's probably a multiplier effect of three. And so I think it's extremely important to look at the wage aspect, the, the benefit aspect, and the working conditions of construction workers when we talk about incentivizing and providing a policy that will attract business, but at the same time allow for housing to be built, as well as for workers to have a fair shot under the working conditions. Thank you, and again, I urge you to support the recommendations that the commission made, that the commissioners made of implementing this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernesto. Next caller?
Caller with the last four digits, four, two, four, three.
Hi, yes, my name is Luis Andres Perez. I represent UA Local Five Eighty Two Plumbers and Steamfitters with over a thousand members in Orange County. I was calling in, in support of the housing ordinance change overall, with the exception that, specifically with a couple of areas. With Section One subsection M, the Santa Ana City Council finds that a construction of new housing units will also stimulate the economy by providing jobs, and to that, the city is committed to encouraging that. My overall issue is concerning the non-enforceable commitment on skilled and trained workforce. Without having an enforceable skilled, trained workforce component into the housing ordinance, there's no way that the city can actually facilitate those needs. And essentially with lowering the, the, the per square footage cost to developers, you're essentially creating development without placement. And with, that has no beneficial remarks to the workers of the city of Santa Ana or to the folks who are trying to buy a home within their own city. What all this is doing is then creating housing for folks on the cusp of outside of Santa Ana, and it's only going to facilitate a, a larger issue unless there's an enforceable skill training component to it. Having workers who cannot afford what they're building is disservice for everyone, including the planning commission as a whole. So once again, I'm urging the, the commission and to move it with a recommendation to change it within an enforceable skill training effort and the city council to approve it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Liz. Next caller?
Nathaniel Greensides.
Nathaniel, are you there? Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Are you there? Can you hear you now, Nathaniel? Yes, go ahead. Okay, thanks. My name is Nathaniel Greensides, Ward Five resident, and I am not in support of this item. It would be irresponsible to all Santa Ana residents to reduce housing affordability requirements of new projects here in our city. Of the options which developers have under the WHO, many developers and projects have been opting for the in lieu fee, which are now being proposed to be reduced, both in amount as well as applicability to projects instead of actually constructing and increasing the amount of affordable housing units here in the city. Easing requirements of the WHO will create immediate destabilization of the housing market in our city. Speculation and development devoured many urban and suburban cities in California after the two thousand and eight economic crisis. A report from two thousand and eighteen by the Eighth Institute, along with other groups who advocate for better economic opportunities, explains why this is a bad thing. One, when properties are sold to cash-carrying investors for conversion into rentals, prospective homeowners as well as mom-and-pop landlords are crowded out of the market and communities suffer, particularly communities of color. Two, tenants are negatively impacted with large annual rent increases, speed gouging, a high rate of evictions, and rampant habitability issues. Three, developers and huge corporate landlords now lobby all levels of government to advance their own pursuit of profit and not the interest of long-term residents and community stability. The proposed amendments only serve to allow for corporate landlords and developers to turn quick profits on property here in Santa Ana at the expense of our community. Our residents were already housing cost burdened before the pandemic and now even more so with loss of income due to the pandemic. When applying the findings of this two thousand and eighteen report upon Santa Ana, it becomes apparent that easing requirements of the WHO will open floodgates to outside investors who want to stabilize our community because they care more about profit than people. The notion that fifteen dollars per square foot is too expensive for a large developer to proceed with a proposed project is questionable to me, seeing as other cities charge more. Financially solvent developers who would be subject to the fifteen dollar per square foot fee actually do have the money, but it seems that they would rather prioritize profit over people, and for up to five years at that, apparently. To solve this issue, the city can work with community-based entities such as community land trust, which already exists here in Santa Ana and serves as the best means against incentivizing outside entities' abilities to destabilize our communities. I sincerely ask the commission to not vote in favor of the proposed amendment. I hope that you all continue to remain healthy and well. Thank you, Nathaniel. Next caller?
Caller with the last four digits, one, three, seven, two.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alfonso Ruiz. I'm a longtime resident of Santa
I'm a longtime resident of Santa Ana and a proud member of the Local 5 Insulators Union. I think we can all agree that investment in the development of housing is without a doubt an important and critical endeavor that is vital to the care and progress of our community and cannot be taken lightly. This is precisely why it must be done with utmost care held to the highest building standards and built by a trained workforce. Anything short of that would be doing a disservice not only to everyone directly involved, but the community as a whole. Residents of the housing would receive an inferior and potentially dangerous product due to unskilled labor. Workers would be working under suboptimal safety standards and for lower wages. And our community would lose extremely valuable jobs and apprenticeship opportunities that in these times are needed now more than ever. Throughout this evening, I've heard many, many numbers corresponding to critical details revolving around this housing ordinance. And while all the data is important and must be paid attention to closely and considered, at the end of the day, we must not forget that the reason we invest in housing in the first place is to take care of people. So yes, let's build, but let's build with integrity. Let's build in a manner that takes care of everyone involved and let's make a promise in writing in the ordinance that clearly states and enforces that housing will only be built if it is built to the highest standards by a skilled and trained workforce. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alfonso. Next caller, please.
Caller with the last four digits, 8197.
Good evening. My name is Brian Jermaine. I'm with Sheep Metal Workers, Local 105. We represent over 6,000 members in the area. I'm also in Ward 3, Santa Ana. I'm addressed at 92706, that's my zip code. I'm here to share my thoughts on this ordinance that's in front of us. I believe the component missing is an enforceable skilled and trained workforce and one that's true to local and veteran hiring opportunities. An enforceable skilled and trained workforce establishes good safety standards, allowing a worker to go home and want peace and diminish any liabilities to the employer and developer. As a housing ordinance without an enforceable skilled and trained workforce component will not have labor standards and communities will not have apprenticeship opportunities. Housing Opportunity Ordinance that lowers the developer fees, I can support only if there's an enforceable skilled and trained workforce component to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next caller.
Caller with the last four digits, 5523.
Hey, hello, everyone. This is Manny Escamia. I'm hoping that you can hear me there. I just managed to log in, I guess, in time. Definitely appreciate the level and kind of depth of discussion that's being brought into this extremely important issue. I just kind of had a few questions and I had to leave a little bit earlier, so I'm hoping that maybe you answered it in the meantime. But just some clarification on striking some of the sections like 1902 B2, which I think applied to maybe the Transit zoning code or the Metro East or Harbor-specific plan, basically any of these new plans that we have adopted. So just some clarification as to whether or not that is going to mean that any of these new plans actually don't have to implement any kind of affordable housing and actually are effectively zero, so long as they comply with the plans? And also, you know, whether that then applies to the Main Place project as well as a plan that has currently been adopted by the city and is no, you know, has no additional general plan density that would be changed with any incoming project? So, you know, effectively, this is $0 for Main Place units, which I don't know that, you know, is part of the conversation quite yet. And whether that also then impacts the overlays in Section 411902B4 that seems to kind of apply more to the Transit zoning code? So there's some clarification there as far as what projects that are already ongoing that will be impacted by this. And definitely, I think some things that were interesting and were good. So I don't want to say that, you know, that editing the WHO is totally bad. But that, you know, I think it needs a little bit more of an in-depth discussion. And I hope that this is an item that we could at least take a look at in much more depth and detail rather than arriving at any rash decision. Because I do realize that with COVID, you know, there are a lot of pro-formas that have been directly impacted. But I haven't seen, you know, the evidence as far as, you know, what those numbers actually are, you know, whether it is the $10 mark, the $5 mark, or, you know, whether or not any of these projects are gonna be viable regardless of what the WHO impact is. So that's where I'm really trying to figure out if we can get as much information as possible on this, see and kind of move forward from there. Let's see. Oh, the other item, I'm hoping that we can also include another administrative review date. So, looking at the new ordinance, there wasn't any kind of language saying that we're gonna review this on an ongoing basis. And it actually kept the out-of-date language of 2018. So I'm beginning to add that. And I guess my time's up. If that's it.
Thank you, Manny. Appreciate it. Next caller.
Caller with the last four digits, 1238. Caller with the last four digits, 1238. You've been unmuted.
Okay, next.
Chair, that caller was re-muted. And at this point, there are no further individuals who have dialed *9 to raise their hand and wish to speak.
Okay, thank you, Ali. I appreciate your assistance on this. So at this point in time, the public hearing is closed. And we'll bring it back to...
Chair, just so you know, as you were speaking, two more individuals raised their hands before you said that the public hearing was closed.
Okay, we'll take the two. And at this point in time, we will take the two. And after the two, we will close the public hearing.
All right. Caller with the last four digits, 5562.
Thank you. My name is Luis Sarmiento. I am Program Manager for a community land trust here in Santana called Thrive Santana. And I just want to express my opposition to the amendment, to the proposed amendment, to the Housing Opportunities Ordinance. As a community land trust, we are completely willing to work with developers and with the city and definitely in line with some of the past speakers who have expressed the importance of creating good jobs. And so as a community land trust, we want to make sure that development in Santana is actually benefiting local residents in every way. And because of that, we think that the WHO should be maintained. Right now, in the conversations amongst affordable housing developers, we know that this is one of the only sources, one of the only local sources of funding for affordable housing, which is very much needed in Santana. And if anything, we need stronger requirements from developers. We need stronger language from the city to impress upon developers the importance of making significant investments into our local community. So, that's all. And I guess putting our, offering also our time and availability as a local organization. If there are further conversations, we think that there should be further conversations around these requirements. And we're completely available to follow up with that as well. So, once again, oppose to the proposed amendments to the Housing Opportunities Ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Luis. Next caller, please.
The last caller is last four digits, 7081.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Saraceli Robles. Soy residente de la ciudad de Santana. Estoy llamando porque me opongo a las enmiendas que le están tratando de dejar a la...
Ali?
Hola.
Ali?
Yes.
Can we stop for one second? Who is in the room that can translate for the people that are online?
I speak in conversational Spanish, and I believe Judson also speaks Spanish. So I think we'll be okay. We can allow her to speak in totality and then offer a synopsis at the end.
Perfect. That's all I'm asking.
Okay. Señora, siga, por favor.
Go ahead.
Gracias. Me opongo a que hagan las enmiendas a la ordenanza de vivienda porque en estos momentos de la pandemia es hasta como una burla que le están haciendo a la comunidad cuando están quitando esos fondos. Deberían de incrementar en vez de reducir el costo del pie cuadrado para los desarrolladores porque nuestra comunidad necesita vivienda de bajo costo y más porque no sabemos qué va a pasar en esta pandemia. ¿Cuántas familias van a quedar sin vivienda? ¿Cuántos de nosotros no vamos a tener dónde estar con nuestros hijos? Hay muchos desavollos que ya se están aprobando. ¿Dónde va a parar esto? Porque tenemos siempre que la comunidad pagar por proteger intereses de los cuatro concejales que están poniendo esta enmienda. Ellos solamente están viendo sus intereses personales. No están pensando en la comunidad. No saben el miedo que tenemos ahorita, la angustia de no tener trabajos, de no saber si mañana vamos a tener vivienda. Y todavía vienen y quieren hacer cambios. ¿En qué ciudad vivimos que toda la gente puede venir y cambiar las cosas? Cuando unos concejalos aprobaron esto, llegan otros y lo cambian. ¿En qué ciudad vivimos? Estamos solamente ayudando a la gente que tiene dinero. ¿Y la comunidad dónde quedamos? ¿Dónde quedan nuestros niños? ¿Dónde quedan nuestros jóvenes? ¿Saben si 20 unidades de bajo costo se construyen? Completamente le cambian la vida a esas familias. Por favor, yo les pido, escuchen a la comunidad. Escúchenlos. Nosotros hemos pasado mucho trabajo para poder lograr que todavía este cobre el $15 por pie cuadrado y que ahora vengan y quieran reducirlo a $5. Es una burla. Nuestra comunidad no merece eso. Nosotros somos gente trabajadora, gente honesta, que venimos a trabajar y damos lo mejor de nosotros. Inclusive en esta pandemia estamos haciendo lo mejor de nosotros para salir adelante aquí en la ciudad de Santana. Deberíamos detener esta reunión pero para incrementar el costo, no para reducirlo. Gracias.
Thank you. Ali?
The caller was expressing her concerns about the fear and the hard working and the impacts of the pandemic to the community and the potential loss of housing and was advocating for keeping the $15 per square foot fee.
I'll add to that. So she opposed the amendments during this pandemic to reduce the cost for developers while families are going to become homeless. Developments are continuing to move forward and private market interests are continuing to move forward while families are at risk of homelessness. We are trying, what about the kids, the families, the community? Listen to the community. To reduce it from $15, to reduce the fee from $15 to $5 es una burla. I don't know what burla means, but una burla. And we are doing our best during this pandemic.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. With that, we will once again conclude the public hearing and we'll bring this back to the members of the Commission. Do any of the Commissioners want to make any comments at this point in time? I'm gonna start with Commissioner Garcia.
None at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Morrisey?
Yeah, I do have a couple of comments. I would echo the, I'm not sure which one of my colleagues made the comment, but this document is, there's a lot of uncertainty in the document. And it really warranted a much more study. I think a lot of the items have been fleshed out, including timing of payment, the amounts we're talking about, the inclusion of skilled labor. I think a lot of this language is truly not thought through and as well as the language regarding the use of the funds. The way it's written right now, anywhere from $0 to $22 million could be used for code enforcement or other such things. So that needs to be cleaned up. So, you know, I really think this document needs to be studied further and not sent to council.
Okay.
I brought your opinion on it.
That's fine. Appreciate your opinion. Commissioner Nguyen?
No comment, thank you.
Commissioner Grevir?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry. I was on mute. Yeah, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Morrisey as far as there's a lot of things I think need to be reviewed here. I mean, just as far as things we would like to see amended, just from the conversation, it seems like there's a lot of changes that were, a lot of us are kind of on the same page as far as things that we want to see, you know, the, you know, as far as the money is used for affordable housing rather than, you know, code enforcement or what exactly that means as far as code enforcement. It's not very specific on the documents. So I think that's something that we need to look at. And also the skilled labor, the conversation as far as the skilled labor, whether the language should read shall rather than should or encouraged rather than, or required rather than encouraged. So we can kind of see some of these jobs, some of these jobs focused to those in our community in Santa Ana. And we can, you know, we're hearing people talking about, you know, struggles during this time. And I think, you know, increasing that workforce and increasing those things is a plus, you know, getting some of this, some of these projects going. So, yeah, I mean, that's it for right now, and we'll continue.
Okay. Commissioner Fan?
Hi. So, let me know if this is not the place, but we've been having this discussion and asking questions of staff and of course, all the incredible comments we see digitally as well as over the phone. I guess I've made a list of the items that I think there actually has been some consensus on. And if we, if I can propose those so that we, I guess, potentially have a motion? Or should I come back to that later?
Let's go through everybody at this point in time and then come back for some discussion as to what can we make the next steps? How can we make the next steps, move forward? That kind of stuff. So, I'm gonna ask to hold off on your list for the moment. And we'll go to Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
I'm good right now, thank you, Chairman.
Okay. All right. From my standpoint, I'm looking at this, and I think that we have a number of different areas that people have brought up. I think that first of all, first and foremost, we have to look at the proposal that's on the table. And the proposal that's on the table is to reduce the fee to $10 for the eight projects that are in the pipeline right now and getting, kickstarting this business and economy now versus possibly six months or a year from now so that we can get some benefit, not just from the standpoint of being able to put a shovel in the ground, but we also get the benefit of getting some of our, if not many of our residents in Santa Ana, giving them the potential of a good job. And I think that's the next thing that we have to look at. And I think that's the next thing that we have to look at is, you know, with these projects comes a labor force and what we want to make sure is that labor force is skilled and trained. And I think there's a lot of discussion within this documentation pertaining to that. And I think that you can melt it down to, I think, several just very simple, several simple comments. And one is the expression of shall versus shall and will. I think the enforceable commitment, seeing that we have an enforceable commitment is something that we want to have for the skilled and trained workforce. The inclusion of the Public Contract Code to have 2603. I think those are the basic things that we're looking at from a labor standpoint and the benefits of labor. And hopefully, the other comment that I think came out with regards to labor was that we can expand this into the schools, the Santa Ana College, Santa Ana Unified School District, expand it into those areas so that the, again, the youth of Santa Ana have the opportunity to work at good paying positions and jobs in Santa Ana. The last area that I see is that there is a lot of concerns or discussion around just how this is written and how this document is written. And to try to eliminate certain aspects that are not clear, ambiguous statements and things like that. So, to me, those are the three key areas that we're looking at from the standpoint of what needs to be done as a next step. The question is, and I pose this to you, Min, what can we do in this? And how do we go about if we want to make these modifications to the documentation and make these changes in the recommendation of this particular document? How do we best go through this? The current recommendation is for the planning commission to forward Yahoo Committee's recommendation to the city council for approval. With the discussion items that have been discussed today, the planning commission's role is to provide that recommendation. And if you want to amend that recommendation to include the items of discussion, it would be appropriate to include those as well. What I heard, it's about four items relating to labor, relating to making sure that the spending of the funding, as well as mix application. So all of those recommendations can be formulated into a revised recommendation to the city council. We stand in the past that those recommendations have been worded that way and in the process between delivering the ordinance to the city council, staff would provide an alternative language to the council, provide language with that and the council then could consider both the recommendation of the planning commission brought out. Okay. How do we document? How do we categorize the recommendations that we see? You would formulate that into a motion that incorporates the antithetic changes that you would like to recommend to the current ordinance?
Right. If you want to point out the specific sections that you want to change, we'll do a cross out that will go and be submitted to the council with your recommendation as an alternative language.
Okay. All right. I understand that. Let me bring it back to the commission. Based on what we just discussed, moving this, trying to move this forward, is there any questions or comments that anybody has at this point in time?
Chair, this is Commissioner Fan.
Yes.
Oh, I just wasn't sure if we're still going in order. Yeah, so I kind of drafted up a quick list of recommendations based on the conversation tonight. And I think that I can update those and then, you know, we can, I can move to add that or make those changes onto the draft two that can be then forwarded to the city council. Does that work?
Okay.
Okay.
Any comments, any comments from the fellow commissioners with regards to the direction we're taking?
None, none other than Commissioner Fan. I assume your list is a little bit more extensive than what Mark just listed? Or should I provide that now or just wait till after you go through your list?
So I have, yeah, hopefully seven or eight things.
Just for clarification, my list was more or less, you know, I was trying to give us a, here's three categories, four categories that we're working in. The details, the devil's in the details and the details are coming from each and every one of you from the standpoint of what it is. I think Ty has established a list and I think the list is, the list will be more comprehensive than what my discussion was. I just want to make sure that...
Yeah, should have rephrased that, Mark, because what I meant was your big, your three items. I would add a third or fourth one, which was the fee for new projects, the 5 dollar fee moving up to at least 10 dollars.
Fair, fair point. That's a fair point, I understand that. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, like I said, we look at short term. How do we get ourselves moving from a project point of view? How do we get ourselves moving from a worker's point of view? Skilled and trained workers, getting our youth in there, getting in the apprentices and things like that that are going to move, that'll be building these projects. And then we look at what we're doing from the standpoint of solidifying, you know, like I think that possibly one of the recommendations that came forward was maybe six months is not the appropriate time. Maybe we look at more than six months, nine months or a year for the current projects. That's another possibility. It doesn't change the fee, the fee's still 10 dollars. But maybe time, a little more time might generate more activity on the part of the developers. I'll say this, let's go back to Fan's list and take it from there.
Okay. So what I have is in section one of the ordinance where we have the determinations and declarations, to add that part of the amended purpose is to promote the construction of entitled projects as well as upcoming projects to, as soon as possible, to promote economic development in the city and build jobs that are much needed, especially right now during the pandemic. The second item I would add to the determinations and declarations in section one would be to include that construction of, you know, new housing units, stimulate the economy. I know that was a comment that was made a few times during the public hearing and that if the construction utilizes a skilled and trained workforce that has local preference, specifically Santa Ana preference, that will actually put our residents back to work and benefit our city. The next change I would make is under definitions. That is page 1-7. To add a definition for skilled and trained workforce in accordance with Public Contract Code 2601 to 2602 and of course, as amended by the state. I would add that on page 1-19, under section...
Five?
Yeah, five. That we do change the language from encourage and should to shall because as we know, encourage and should are very soft words and they don't really mean anything. And that we should, we shall require skilled and trained workforce in accordance with 2601 to 2603 because we want to have an enforceable commitment that there is skilled and trained workforce. We want to make sure that our residents are being put to work and that there is local preference, specifically with hiring Santa Ana residents, veterans. And then if that doesn't meet the requirement, then expand it to graduates of, you know, Santa Ana Unified School District, Garden Grove Unified School District, as well as Rancho Montego Community College District. The next item, oh, I mentioned the enforceable agreement. The next item I would amend is the statement regarding code enforcement and maintenance. Apologies, that's page 1-18. Where the inclusionary housing fund fees are used, when they are used for code enforcement and maintenance, there must be a nexus to current and/or entitled affordable units for the benefit of those current and/or entitled affordable units, as defined under the WHO. I would also add that we have, aside from the April 2021 sunset or requirement of pulling a building permit, that we do have a review period of two years. I think that's consistent with the last version of the WHO, even though it took us longer than that to review. And finally, I am not making a recommendation regarding the fee just because there seems to be a lot, I think we're all kind of all over the place and I think there are, you know, conversations regarding 10 dollars, 5 dollars, or keeping it at 15. And if we're just not comfortable deciding what that is, that we don't make a recommendation regarding the fee itself. Those are all my suggested changes.
Okay, so having said what you go through, having gone through your list, Norma, do you have any additions, deletions, changes that you'd like to make to Ty's list?
I do, thank you, Mark. I would add that at page 113, section three, timing of payment, that we reject the proposed revision striking first and leading first in that section.
Fan, I'm going to ask, Ty, I'm going to ask you to add this to your list.
I'll take the friendly amendment. And perhaps we're not in, we don't have consensus on the fee for the new projects, not the already entitled projects. But I would say that I would, you know, ask the commissioners to consider changing that to at least a compromise of 10 dollars. At the very least, considering, I think, the numbers that you were able to restate, Mark, showing that developers are paying, developers in Santa Ana have been and are paying on average or around 10 dollars makes a lot of sense. And it continues to provide very necessary affordable housing funds to a community that needs it, especially as we've heard from the comments in light of this pandemic and we don't know what lies ahead. I do think that, I do find it difficult to believe that our developers who agreed to pay 15 dollars per square unit in 2015, 2016, 2017, 2018, and even 2019, that they would refuse to do that in honor of their agreement. And, you know, and going forward, that they wouldn't pay 10 dollars per square foot.
Okay. Ty, have you got that?
Yeah, and I'm just still not sure about that. So I think, at least I can make the motion regarding everything else we talked about and maybe Commissioner Garcia can make a separate motion regarding the fee.
I can, yeah, can I go?
Well, we can't have, the process would be is that if the motion doesn't have a friendly amendment, then the recommended, recommendation, you would take the first motion without the 10 dollars discussion as a recommendation. And if that second gets voted, then I think you can see with that. But if that doesn't get the approval, then you would go to the second motion. So I believe there's already a motion in place by the motion maker and there isn't a friendly...
I would make a friendly, I would make, I would make a friendly amendment on that. Are you, sorry, Mark?
I don't think we have at this point in time an absolute motion made at this point. And what we're putting together is the information that will be that, that will basically establish that motion. So, to your point... I'm sorry, Chair, go ahead. To your point, to your point, it would appear to me that we would go forward with the initial motion and then go forward with the initial motion and then if need be, come in with a friendly amendment to that initial emotion, motion.
Right, I believe at this point we were discussing, discussing the items that would be in the motion and still it's not, it has not been made.
Correct.
So for clarity, for clarity on the motion, right now I have about nine items and then the 10th item is in discussion. I want to clarify that these items, staff will formulate language forming your recommendation so that we can forward to the city council where we're not looking at a red line document of the ordinance itself. What we're sending to the city council is the current ordinance with the recommended changes and the way that you're recommending to the city council. So I just want to make a clarification so that it's clear on what we're forwarding to the city council.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Couldn't we take a single vote first to see where we are on the 10 dollars for future projects versus the five? And then dependent on that, then we have our two motions, one with five and one with 10? But all the amendments, I mean, we can make recommendations but council's going to do at the end of the day what they do. But should we just see if we are on the same page unanimously or not on the amount?
Well, to some extent, the challenge on the amount is that we really don't have an understanding of what the basis of the three numbers are. And I say three numbers because today, today we have a 15 dollar number, which from a staff perspective, it doesn't do any good because no one's, no one's said this is, no one has paid the 15 dollars. We have a 10 dollar number, which is the pandemic, you know, let's get the, let's get the shovels going and, you know, reduce the fee by 5 dollars to 10 dollars and hope that we can get all of the current projects up and running within the next six to 12 months. And we understand that to a certain degree. But then the final number of 5 dollars, it's, again, we don't have an understanding of how that was established or why that was established that way. So I'm not sure, you know, we, not sure that separating it from what we're trying to accomplish here today is going to, is going to make any difference. Maybe I'm wrong, anybody have a comment on that? I'm more than willing to hear. Min?
I'd like to, I'd like to comment, is that okay? Just Commissioner Verver?
Yeah, sure, Felix, go ahead.
Maybe having an impression on what the dollar amount looks like for all of us right now would be a good idea. I see with Ty's, Ty's putting together for the motion, but if we don't know what that agreement is going to be as far as all of us, as far as where we stand it, when it comes to the dollar amount, maybe that's something we need to discuss openly right now and kind of get an understanding of where we all stand so that we can create a motion that we can send forward to the city council.
Okay, so let me clarify one thing with that statement. If I go back to our early discussions, staff basically said that under today's conditions of 15 dollars per square foot, all eight projects amounted to 22.3 million dollars. Is that the number that you're looking at? Is that the number that you're looking for?
Yes, that's the one I'm, I'm looking at, and that's right now, fifteen.
So then, then, then the next, the next, the next level of discussion was for the eight projects. And this is only the eight projects, this has nothing to do with before or after, it's just the eight projects.
Correct.
If we go, if we go in it, if we go in it at ten dollars, and the fee is gonna be fourteen, it's gonna amount to collecting fourteen point seven million dollars for the in-lu fees. And basically, we will have given up seven point six million dollars.
Correct.
So, those are your numbers?
Those are fees that we haven't collected since two thousand fifteen, is that correct?
Yeah. Those are fees that have not been collected since two thousand fifteen, correct?
I, I can see wanting, I mean, what, what is the point of us, um, making amendments to, to get these, like, uh, these, uh, this workforce, skilled labor force, um, all these words, and getting, and getting some skilled labor? Um, if nobody's paying the in-lu fees, and we're not gonna move forward with labor anyways? I mean, it might as well just not be there, if that's the case. Why not, why don't we get eight projects moving as fast as we can? And maybe increase the new projects, um, instead of, maybe flip flop, instead of the new project team, uh, five dollars, why not? And the, the existing project at five, now which we can get, those existing projects go, built. They, you know, they're already there, and then we can, we can increase the fees for the other ones. Or, I mean, increase it, but more than what we're asking for right now.
Okay, so at, at the end of the day, how would you, how do you wanna formulate your question, your, your statement?
I mean, I would like to see that, I don't know how everybody feels about that. If that's not the case, I'm, I'm good with just, um, keeping it at ten and ten. But I would like to see, um, those eight projects get built and be done. Um, we're, we're, like I said, we're looking at since two thousand fifteen, why don't we get those completed? Um, I would like to see that at five dollars, uh, but if not every, please, I can, you know, for good with ten, and then also doing that, that ten as well, would be, I would, good.
Uh, Chair McLachlan, if I can make a suggestion?
Go ahead.
Chair McLachlan, if I can make a suggestion?
I'm, I'm here.
So, um, Commissioner Fan went through a list of nine items, um, that she would be willing to put forth as a motion. Think, um, what could be done, so that you can gauge the, the, um, uh, the willingness of the commission is to determine whether or not the current, uh, if put into motion is something that can be second and asked to support. Um, and then if it doesn't, then I think that's when it would be appropriate to discuss, discuss the fee. But if it has the current support the way it is, then you have a recommendation to forward to council.
Okay, so what you're recommending is that the fees, as they are currently written in the ordinance, we would, we would vote on those fees? And if it passed with the? And I'm saying.
What I'm recommending with the fan? Yes, what I'm, what I'm recommending is that Commissioner Fan made nine items that seems to reflect the, um, concerns of the commission, and allow that to be in motion. Uh, and, uh, if it has a second, then allow that to be voted on. Um, if that doesn't happen, you know that, you know, there would be discussion on the fee that needs to be discussed. And, you, you know, you can talk about how to arrive at the consensus on the recommendation regarding the fee.
So you're recommending that we go through, we take Fan's list, and we take that along with the current recommended fees and vote on that?
Right.
All right? And then if that's?
Mr. Rivera?
Yeah, go ahead.
But, uh, but Commissioner Fan's list did not include the fee. So I mean, are we voting to have the fee as, as is right now? What, what would that look?
Yes, yes, the voting would.
Commissioner, yes, Commissioner Fan's list left the fees as stated in the current draft ordinance.
Correct, correct, correct.
As recommended by the council ad hoc committee.
If, I, uh, if I may, I think that, uh, Commissioner Rivera makes a good point. And it's one thing that, that I also thought was odd, that we would reduce the fees for new projects to five dollars, and for entitled projects, keep it either fifteen or ten. I, I just thought it was an interesting way to approach this, uh, just from, even as a negotiation standpoint, it was an interesting way to, to approach it. But I think that, uh, Commissioner Rivera brings up a, a very good, uh, potential, uh, discussion and, and, uh, and I don't know if this is feasible, but I think that perhaps what the friendly amendment could look like is to say, um, that we recommend that the city either make it even, ten, ten, or revisit the numbers, so that it doesn't penalize the current entitled, um, projects. So is that something that's possible, that, that that recommendation on the fee could look like a, look at the fee structure, and this is what we're recommending, one of these two options?
Well, I think what we're, what we're recommending first is to take the list and the existing fee structure and, and taking that to vote. That's what's being recommended by staff.
Right, and what I, what I'm asking, Mark, is can we make a friendly amendment to that li- list of nine that incorporate the comments and the concerns expressed by some of us, including Commissioner Rivera just now? Where it's not a direct sort of, you know, strike that to X amount of dollars, but this is what we recommend, that you either look at this potential number or look at it this way. I'm wondering if that's an option or, or not. And so it would be presenting two, two alternatives to the, to the council.
Lisa?
Yes, that, that's, yes, that is an option for you to recommend to council, that this discussion that you had resulted in this further discussion that you want the council to look at.
Yeah, so that, I think that's, that would be my preference, to make a friendly amendment that incorporate, um, the comments that Commissioner Rivera just makes. I think that does, at least from, from my perspective, and I don't know if that is true for a majority of the commissioners, but that encompasses our concerns, right? The disparity, and then, you know, going from fifteen to five, um, and asking them to take a closer look at that, and not to take the ad hoc, uh, commission, uh, the ad hoc, uh, recommendation at face value, but if they study it further.
Okay.
Ms., Ms. Chair?
Yes?
Tom, um, I, yeah, I would agree with that. Um, I would also, I also think that the, um, there's a financial component to the workforce agreement that, uh, is kind of a complex issue that, uh, needs to be, um, discussed as part of the fee structure. It were, it seems we're, if I'm not mistaken, we're also retroactively applying a, um, workforce agreement to existing projects. Um, that needs to be part of the equation of the, uh, fee structure. So I, I think that's another thing that should be forwarded to the council for their, uh, consideration.
So how would you, how would you, how would you, how would you develop your, your statement on that, uh, on that item?
Uh, similar to the, uh, fee structure that we just, that we forward the, uh, it's exact numbers. Um, we forward the, uh, section forty-one, nineteen oh nine, article five, to the, uh, council for, um, further refinement.
Forty-one, forty-one dash nineteen oh nine?
Uh, point five.
Point five, which is, which Fan has, Fan reviewed the changes that are there. You're looking at, your, your perspective that you wanna look at is based on financial impact?
Um, yeah, well, there's also the issue of us requiring a, uh, see, I, I can understand us, and every, that, we all want a, uh, local skilled workforce. But, um, having us require that on a developer for private development, how does that impact? I, I think it needs further study, how it impacts, um, desirability to build in San Ana as opposed to an adjacent city. Um, uh, I think it's, it needs to be carefully structured. So, uh, I, I don't think we have the information here to make that kind of determination on requiring a skilled workforce this time. I think it just needs to be studied further. So I would refer to the city council to study further.
Okay, but, so, so you're just asking it to be studied? I mean, w- w- one thing is, the one thing that's being put forth is the recommendations as to how that section, section five is, is noted. And you're asking for some financial analysis at, once it's been defined, you're asking for the financial analysis of that, of that state, of that set of statements?
Uh, yes, and, uh, the, the impact on, uh, desirability to build in San Ana.
Okay.
How, how that impacts our competitive qualities is put, uh, to adjacent, uh, communities.
Okay.
So, um, this is Ty, may I make a comment on all the other comments? So, um, I, I definitely understand that, um, whoa, there are, so for me, it is very much important that we are going to amend the fee to require a lower fee, that we get a benefit for our residents, for the people who work here and live here. Um, otherwise, I think that it, it's kind of missing the point. Um, because I don't wanna benefit, frankly, workers from Riverside or the Inman Empire. I wanna benefit the workers who live here. So, you know, if there's a lot of disagreement, we can also make low recommendations to the city council. Um, and ask that staff provide more in-depth, uh, study and research, uh, you know, regarding the fees, regarding the, uh, Commissioner Morris's concerns regarding, um, the skilled and trained workforce. But, uh, to me, that is very important. Um, I think that that is part of the main incentive to change, lower the fees, but actually get something back for our community specifically. So that's my, if I make a motion, I'd say that's, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I would echo what, uh, Fan just said, is that, uh, you know, I think there is some, some kind of a give back on that that makes sense with the, especially with the assumption that we're trying to get labor force from San Ana. I mean, um, hopefully, to answer your question differently, hopefully, if projects go ahead and we're successful at those projects, people will wanna do more business in San Ana. They won't wanna do more construction in San Ana, because we have a skilled and trained workforce. And I think that's, I think that's, uh, I think there's no, no questions about, you know, we always have to look at the financial aspects of things. But I think that's what, what I would see benefiting. If we get up and running, we start shoveling dirt, we get into the projects, and we have a good workforce here locally, people will want to construct here if they've got a good workforce. So, um, but I, but, but your comment is good, and I think we should take that into consideration as we move forward with our recommendations, Tom.
Yeah, well, I, you know, I, you know, I fully agree, we have, we need a skilled workforce. I'm just concerned, going forward, the, uh, you know, these incentives are going to expire, but we will still have, um, all the requirements, um, for the skilled workforce. So I, I just wanna make sure that we're not, we're not shooting ourselves in the foot.
Right, but also, also, that's for a developer that opts to pay the in-lu payment. They can also build on site instead of paying the fee.
Right. Right, they have that option, perfect.
Correct.
Perfect comment, yep.
So, Mr. Chairman? This is Steve Mendoza.
Steve, please, uh, speak.
So what you have is many, many suggestive changes. We don't have total agreement on all of the items, and that's understood, it's easy to understand. But I think staff can take what all the issues are and what the suggestive changes are and paraphrase those, and provide those to city council along with the recordings of the meeting, and we can move this forward.
Good enough, thank you for, thank you for the recommendation. Um, given that, given that statement, uh, one other thing that I would put as a, as an item on the list is that there was a comment made by one of the, one of the speakers about potentially extending the period from six months to maybe nine months or, or a year to, for just, for just those eight projects, for just those eight projects on the table. Um, that's just a, a comment that I would wanna throw out. Other than that, do we have everything that we need to have at this point in time to put a motion together and take a vote?
Are you asking us? If, if you are, say yes, yes.
Okay, so if, if we believe we have something ready to go, then I'd like to have a motion and a second. Motion coming from Fan?
Yeah, I mean, I would move for, oh.
I'm, I'm sorry. My, my question is, is still that, the, her, her motion, I believe, is a nine amended item. Uh, but we, believing, le- leaving the, the word change, um, on, on the dollar as it is. And I would, I would like to amend that, um, if that's possible, if we can make a motion for that.
Uh, Felix, or Commissioner Rivera, I would, I would, uh, propose, I would make a friendly amendment adding, uh, the potential, the discuss, asking council to discuss and review the two different options on the fee, um, that Lisa said we can present. And I'm, I'm, uh, I'm hopeful that it would be accepted. And then we could take a vote.
Does that, does that work with you, Felix?
Yeah, I mean, what I, the way I wanna see it was, uh, the five dollars for the eight entitled projects, that would, we can, and, and changing that, that word, the word that, uh, all the stuff that, uh, Commissioner Fan talked about was, you know, leaving the lump sum payment at the first permitted, uh, first permit pool, um, at the labor force from San Ana for those, uh, for all of them. And, uh, and moving the other, the new projects from five to ten. Um, that way we can get those eight rolling, and we can get that worked on, um, and the new ones can come in at ten.
Mr. Chair, can I, Mr. Chair, Mr. Cynthia? If I may, could we perhaps add this conversation that we're having to be part of the recommendation? That they take a, a, a look at what we're saying and in regards to the whole approach to the fee?
I think Steve, I think, I think Steve Mendoza.
Right, we can have your list, right, we can have your list. And on the section that regards fees, we can have that, a, a lively discussion ensued between the commissioners and the different aspects that you want them to further review. Okay, so then we would have.
I'm not sure it was, I'm not sure it was a lively discussion, but, uh.
Say so.
She's a writer, she's a writer.
Spirit it, spirit it. Spirit it, I like that.
I think that.
There you go, that's, that's a good word.
Right, we can, we can list out the different options that you discussed that you want them to further review.
Okay.
And, uh, would it, would that cut in Lisa as a mo- as a friendly amendment?
Yes, that could be an amendment to the motion, because her amendment, her motion was basically keep it as is. And now with the discussion that you've all discussed, we can have the different, uh, review items that you want, like new entitlements this, previously entitled this, and have the different discussion items that you discussed.
Excellent, okay, thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
Okay. Mr. Chairman? All right, so, yeah, go ahead, Ken.
I would like, if possible, would like to make the recommendation that the, you know, the ad hoc committee have studied and recommended five dollars for twelve-foot feet, and the, and the, I believe the staff recommended ten, ten dollars for twelve-foot. I would like, I would like to propose, if possible, for the fee, our job is recommend to the city council what the fee should be, and what the, what the, the, you know, the amendment should be, so I, I would like, if possible, to propose that the recommended fee for eight dollars, twelve-foot, for the first eight projects, yes.
Ken, let me just, let me just, I'm, I'm going to ask Lisa to, Lisa and Min to chime in as we, as I bring this comment. To me, I think we established upfront the fact that we're, we're not, the planning commission is not, is not require, is not asked to, or, or asked for input relative to fees. Fees are strictly those that are negotiated and managed by the council. So, right now, we have fees that the council ad hoc committee has essentially proposed, and I think staying within the boundaries of what they proposed is really where we have to be at this point in time, not, not arbitrarily assigning what we think the number should be. Lisa, is that...
That's correct, there.
Yes, no, that's, that's correct. So, so normally, your, your purview as a planning commission, you're not normally setting fees, that's, that's not your purview or your role, you're looking at developments and projects and applications. So this ordinance was brought to you by the ad hoc committee with their number. You don't know exactly how they got to that number, and you've raised some questions and concerns about the numbers, and so what we're talking about with the motion is putting in a outline of your discussion, and what you want them to look at when they make their final decision on their ordinance revision.
Right, so, I appreciate your proposal, Ken, but I think at this point in time, what we are dealing with is three numbers, three numbers that have been presented in this ordinance, and all we have talked about doing is potentially shifting the amount to a different category, but not changing the amounts that have already been stated in the, in the, in the ordinance. So I'd like to stick with that, and say that we have ten dollars, oh, excuse me, we have fifteen dollars current fee, ten dollars proposed fee for the eight projects that are on the table, and five dollars fee for future projects. And the friendly amendment to that has been that it would be a flip, where you would have fifteen dollars today for the projects, go to five, and then the future would be ten. Those are two, two different, two different proposals, but still within the boundaries of the fees that have been put forward by the ad hoc committee at this point. Does that, does that help, Ken?
Yeah, thank you. I, I would support with the five dollars for the current approved project, and ten dollars for the future project, I would support that amendment.
Okay, all right, thank you on that one, appreciate that. Okay, so...
Mark, I just want to make sure, I may have missed, I don't know if I heard all of what you said, but I just want to make sure that one of those comments was a ten-ten split as well. So ten for current and ten for new.
Ten for current and ten for future.
Yeah, correct.
We, we will be able to provide the council with a summary of the discussion here, and we will provide the council with the different perspective that is being presented, so I think it's understood that the commission wants to provide clarity for current projects that are under entitlement, and for future projects, and if there's desire to lower the fee, then it should be lower for the current entitled project, and be at about ten dollars for the future project, so express those discussions, and provide the city council with what was concern, raised, the concerns raised here by the commission, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is Cynthia.
Cynthia, go ahead.
I'd like to second Commissioner Tan's motion, and with the amendment of our discussion of the different levels of, of fees, our lively discussion.
Our lively discussion, yes, there you go. Spirited, spirited was the word.
Spirited and lively.
There you go, spirited and lively, okay. At nine, at nine twelve at night, at nine twelve at night, anything is going to be spirited and lively. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, and we have a friendly amendment from Commissioner Anything, any other comments, discussions that you'd like to have at this point in time?
So to clarify, we have the, we have the motion from Commissioner Fan, and the amendment from Commissioner Contreras Leo?
We have, we have a second from Contreras Leo, we have an amendment from Felix Rivera.
Regarding the discussion on fees.
We're going into discussion on fees. We have enough, we have enough information to move forward.
Perfect, perfect.
Commissioner, okay.
Chairman, I have one.
Yes.
I have a question, so what, what is the motion on the inclusionary housing fund clause, where money's made used to pay for one-time programs for code enforcement?
Let me, let me step there, if I may, the consensus of the commission there is to ask the city council to consider to narrow the scope of spending, so that there is a nexus between the spending and code enforcement action, if that should be the case, that would focus on affordable housing projects, and not just any code enforcement.
Okay, so that sounds great.
Does that help?
Yes.
Okay, where are we, just out of curiosity, Tom, can you, what page are you referring to at this point in time on this discussion?
One dash eighteen.
One dash eighteen, okay, and that's, so one dash eighteen is...
Inclusionary housing fund?
Section forty-one, nineteen oh nine, subsection A one.
Yeah.
A, A one.
Okay, yep.
And then one dash nineteen, we're saying we want a skilled workforce, but we want that studied further.
You are recommending, you are recommending that the city council consider changing from an aspirational encourage to shall, and also look at incorporating...
Shall and will.
Shall, and then also incorporating section twenty-six oh three into the section citation.
Correct, but the statement, if we keep the words, if we keep the words the same, it's, I believe, shall and will provide an enforceable commitment, committed, committed skilled and trained workforce. That was, that was the whole discussion.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and I think the key, the key understanding there is enforceable.
Right, okay, and, all right.
And we're including our discussion on that point?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? Commissioner Morrissey, can you repeat what you said?
There was a discussion regarding that point, you know, we're including our, the commission's discussions on all these points, or was it just the...
Yes, basically, it's a, it's a summary and paraphrase of the discussion regarding the fee and the various perspective on how to apply the fee to the various development project in different stages of development.
This is Commissioner Fan, I want to clarify that in my motion regarding the recommendation related to the section five, the recommendation is to, for it to say shall and will include section twenty-six oh three.
Yes.
Not merely a discussion that, or not merely a recommendation that we've had in session on it, thank you.
Correct, that is correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just don't think we have enough data to make, make that, require that. I think we should leave it to the council to study. I just, I don't have enough information.
And I think, so your point, I think your point's clear, I think your point's clear, we, we'd like to have, if I'm, if I'm really what you said, we'd like to have a study, we'd like to have a study of the, the, one, before I lose my train of thought here, go back to the page, you'd like to study more of the enforceable commitment? Or the fact that you're using skilled and trained labor? Tom?
Well, I, I don't know what the fiscal impact is, I, we, it's, I'm not familiar with this market enough to understand how the developers would do that requirement, so I just think it needs to be studied further. I don't know if there's, there could be all sorts of impacts that I don't understand, and I don't, I don't think we have enough information to understand here. We can, we can recommend to do it, I, I think it's a good idea, but I think it needs to be studied further.
Then we will, we can, we'll recommend it, we'll recommend it with a, with a caveat that says, you know, that, look at, look at how to make this feasible.
Concerns were raised, concerns were raised about the cost?
Yeah, but, you know, I think, I think that...
Again, that's, that's an option, that there's, that's an option that the developer is choosing rather than building on site.
Right, right, so I would recommend that, that the recommendation is for the council to consider the word shall, make an enforceable commitment, with a recommendation to evaluate also the financial impact to projects, should that be the choice of the city council to move forward with that requirement. But if the city council decide not to support the shall and should, then, you know, this whole discussion would be not applicable.
Correct.
So I think that's where the recommendation...
Fair, fair statement, okay. What, so, okay, Fan, do you have anything else?
Yes, due to the, you mentioned comments, can we make sure that staff read back these motions, to make sure we're all on the same page?
Yeah, yeah, I agree, we should, we should do that. Who's going to jump up and do that? Are we ready?
So, the motion by Commissioner Fan is to help express some of the goal of this proposed recommendation in the recital to reflect promotion of economic development in the city, support of skilled labor and workforce, and support construction and stimulating of new housing development. The recommendation is to make the labor section enforceable by incorporating a language that is definitive, shall and should, shall instead of should, will instead of encourage, and then incorporate section twenty-one oh six oh three, in addition to the reference of twenty-six oh one and oh two, incorporating recommendation for consideration of local preference of San Diego residents, veterans, and students of local school districts. Number six would be to revise or discuss the necessary for a nexus on the spending of funding for code enforcement activities to promote affordable housing projects. Somebody didn't like what I did?
Bless you.
Somebody die back there? You died.
Incorporate a consideration to a few-year period, similar to the current review requirement, also to consider language for, referring to the previous language of aiming the fee at the time of first issuance of permit, looking at providing the twelve-month entitlement project, for entitlement project instead of eleven months, and then with a, a summary discussion of the planning commission regarding the fee and the various different perspectives on how the fee should be applied for projects at various phases of development, including projects that have been entitled, and projects that are in, in the future. So I believe that summarizes the, the motion. Okay, and with respect to the fees, the fees, we will have a discussion, provide the various perspective of fees, one perspective is to flip the five and ten dollars to be where the five dollars applies to the title project, and the ten dollars would be for future projects, and then also a discussion of potentially just making it the same for all projects at ten dollars.
Okay.
You know, I, I just think it's kind of random, we're just kind of randomly putting numbers to fees, there's, there's no basis.
Are you, are you stating that, Tom, in relationship to what we, what we're proposing now, or are you stating that in relationship to what the ordinance proposed to start with?
I think, oh, there was really no basis for it, from what I can see, I think we just need to refer the fee, the issue to the council.
That's, that's what you're doing, Commissioner Morrissey. That's what you're doing. Correct, you're referring the fee to the commission, to the council, with a summary of the discussion by the city, and I will make a note, in addition, what I expressed is your concern about basis for the fee.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Okay? Any other commissioners?
Min, can I confirm, yeah, I just want to confirm that I did miss the nexus of code enforcement language in your summary.
Yes, the summary includes the nexus for making sure that the affordable housing fund is, with the code enforcement, that there'll be a nexus between the administrative code enforcement activity with enhancement, and promotes, promotion of affordable housing development problem.
Thank you.
Okay, any other commissioners' comments at this point in time? Does, do we, Min, not Min, Ty, do we believe at this point that what Min just recited back to us is consistent with what you've got on your list?
Yes, I think so. I'm excited for us to vote on this, and help council figure it out.
Okay, all right, with that said, Madam Secretary, will you please do a roll call vote?
Sure, Commissioner Morrissey.
Sarah, Sarah, your voice has changed, Sarah.
It's been that long of a meeting.
It's getting late, it's getting, it's getting late. Mr. Chairman, we're trying to be serious to vote here.
All right, Commissioner Morrissey.
Just stay, just stay spirited. Vote aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia?
It is a spirited aye as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Nguyen.
A definitely aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Fan. Thank you, Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Thank you, and then, uh, let's see, uh, Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Aye.
All right, and then Chairman McLaughlin.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you commissioners and thank you staff for getting us through this, um, I appreciate, uh, the input that we received from the community, um, I think obviously the time we spent on this was well spent because there was a lot of good, good thoughts that came out of the documentation that we was, that we were presented with, um, and I think that, uh, the questions, the questions were good from the standpoint of the commissioners and the comments from the audience were good, uh, and I'm just happy that we're able to get to the end as we have at this point in time. So, the motion is approved, uh, we will move on to, uh, staff comments.
Thank you, um, Chair McLaughlin, I have no further report except to say that I really appreciate the time and the discussion and the, uh, spirited, um, discussion we have here today, um, thank you for, um, so that's what moving this party forward.
Okay, um, I'll then ask, uh, Commissioner Garcia, do you have any comments?
No more for me tonight, thank you.
You're, you're commented out?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Morrissey.
Uh, no further comments for me.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate that, uh, Commissioner Rivera.
No, no comment.
Commissioner Nguyen.
No comment for me, thank you.
Commissioner, uh, Fan.
Just quickly, I wanted to thank staff because I probably sent you a million emails and had a lot of questions, uh, and I really appreciate you, you know, answering questions rapid fire and being patient with us, so thanks, and good luck with the commissioner, uh, with the council.
That's what we're here for. Okay, and, um, Commissioner Contr, Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Just thanking staff, uh, for your time as well and, um, keeping it lively, Lisa, thank you.
Okay, thank you, um, from my standpoint, a couple of observations, I think number one is that, um, uh, this particular ordinance, I think that it was a real challenge, and I, I think the commissioners raised up to that challenge that, but there was a real challenge to go through this document because it's, it is extensive and there's a lot of things that, um, uh, it, a lot of things that it says that could greatly influence the future, and I think that, um, it would be nice if we would, as some people have voiced to me from the, from the commission, it would be nice to be able to have a little more time and a little more insight as to what we're, what we're getting ourselves into with a, with a project like this. Uh, as you can see, it took us close to four hours to wade through the dis- discussion tonight, and it was a good discussion, but I think, hopefully, we could do something a little bit better to improve the process in the future. Um, the, the, the second thing is that, uh, I, I wanna go back to, uh, the comments that were made by Dale Halvick, uh, early on about the general plan, and I just wanted to comment and say that, um, I, I too have some concerns about the meetings that had, that were had over the weekend, I participated in the Saturday session, and quite frankly, I was not able to talk or ask, say anything because access through the system that was set up wasn't available to the, to the audience, and there was a lot of, there was a lot of confusion around that, so I'd like to, um, I'd like to get with Min and, and Burn and, and talk about it a little bit more, 'cause the bottom line is, is that I think the stakeholders, who are the residents, need to have the opportunity to partake in this process, and it seems as though there's a lot of concern that they're not getting the visibility or, or, they're not giving the, they're not getting the, the opportunity to say what they wanna say in some respects, 'cause it's been limited in some respects as to what, what and when, uh, we can review this, you know, the general plan, so I just, uh, would like to see us think about that a little bit more and think about some of the answers and the comments that were made from the, from the two sessions over the weekend, 'cause clearly there's a concern about getting this out to more people for their review and understanding. Uh, the presentation that Bernie did was, was good, um, it's just, uh, the, the audience that listened to what he had to say was small, so, um, with that, I will say that we'll adjourn the meeting, uh, tonight, and our next meeting will be on Monday, August tenth, at five thirty, it'll be a regularly scheduled meeting, and I appreciate everybody's taking the time to go through what we did tonight. Thank you, meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.